Aims at giving more protections to LA renters. Well, turning now to getting that business you've been thinking about off the ground. Now that you've got that bright idea, what do you do next? Well, one event is giving small LA businesses a jumpstart and access to hard cash. Anna Marcos takes a look.
If you want to grow your own company and you're at this event, you're in business. The access to Capital Expo at the East LA Business Source Center aims to connect entrepreneurs with dozens of lenders, both traditional and alternative.
Traditional, again, they look for more established businesses and alternatives are more, a little bit liberal, I guess, in regards to the type of businesses they finance. Alternative, now, you're seeing more online lenders, you know, CDFIs, which are local, public, private financed loan programs.
Other consultants here offer no money, but lots of free information. This program called SCORE provides free business mentoring and even a little old-fashioned advice.
First thing I tell my clients is work with something that you have a passion for. Don't just start a business because it might make money. You've gotta have a legitimate passion to follow through on this business in the good days and in the bad days.
But wait, there's a second part to that one.
Is it has to be able to generate money. If it's not gonna generate any money, then it's just a hobby.
Okay, we got it. Find a passion, but one that generates money. Then head to your nearest Business Source Center to get some access to capital. But if you miss the event, business resource centers around the city are always ready with free advice and business training whenever you decide to launch that next big business idea. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The event was a joint effort by Mayor Eric Garcetti's Office of Economic Development and the East LA Business Source Center. For more information, call 323-264-9020. In downtown LA, people who are homeless were treated to some TLC as the LA Mission celebrated its annual Easter event. Rasha Goel has more.
Pierre Andre Saniguer is among the many volunteers helping at this year's LA Mission Easter Celebration, a special event that has been a tradition for the past 25 years for the homeless community. Pierre is all too familiar with the struggles of living on the streets as he was once homeless in LA.
I came from France, live in the street of Venice Beach, been homeless, and I saw how hard it was, you know, not to feel like you're belonging.
But today, he is the owner of Etnies, a highly successful skateboarding shoe company, and at this year's event, he donated 1,500 pairs of shoes along with socks.
They stand on their feet, you know, most of the time, you know, through the street. We make shoes especially for skateboarding, so they're actually extremely durable.
Those who attended the event also received an Easter dinner, Easter baskets, and the chance to enjoy a foot washing station.
Opens your eyes to a lot of homelessness, and you guys help us out a lot, and it's a blessing.
Really, it's a celebration, the purpose of which is to let people know about the services of the mission, as well as to raise awareness of the need of the homeless here in this particular area, as well as across the county.
The LA Mission's Easter event attracted a large crowd. Nearly 600 volunteers came to help out, and between 3,000 to 4,000 people attended the event throughout the day. Volunteers included local community members along with celebrities.
It isn't a holiday for me unless I've come down here to share, and this is the biggest gift to yourself, is sharing what you have, your talents, your creativity, your compassion with people that really, really need it.
I feel like I'm doing something good for the community. I feel like I'm really helping people.
A gift for many that will help carry some hope throughout the year. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The LA Mission opened in 1992 and has been holding this event ever since. Well, turning now to families who don't own a computer. It can be really tough, especially when children can't do homework online. Many times, students have to travel miles away from home to the nearest library to get their work done. But that's about to change for many families in Pacoima who received free computers thanks to the city. Gil Reyes has more from Pacoima. Gil?
Yana, the city's innovative computer giveaways have taken place in communities like Reseda, South LA, and so many others. But this is the first time in the community and home of Rocker Ritchie Valens, actor Danny Trejo, and so many other greats. 100 free computers with Wi-Fi here in the great community of Pacoima.
Hey, what's your name? Hey Natalie, here you go.
LA City Council President Herb Wesson helps to hand out free computers to families gathered at Pacoima City Hall. The technology will go a long way in helping Walter Hernandez and his family.
Definitely, it's gonna be a lot because we don't have no internet, and we're thinking, you know, to get it, but they're so expensive.
But these devices cost nothing. Hernandez can thank the HourCycle LA Program. HourCycle takes outdated LA City Department computers and, instead of throwing them away, repairs them for families in need, so kids can do online homework and so much more.
Yes, 100 computers with Wi-Fi, the complete system, monitor, peripherals, Windows 10, full office suite.
Every kid should have a computer and free internet access.
Councilman Wesson and the city's Information Technology Agency came up with the concept two years ago, and since then, thousands of families have benefited. The city's General Services Department stores the computers in a downtown LA warehouse where they await repair and distribution.
Hoping to have the ability and the opportunity to go out to every council district and make sure everyone that needs them to have one.
But I wanna kick off a program that I'll do at the beginning of the summer where we're gonna try to provide computers to every child in the city of Los Angeles that needs computers. And I'm gonna try to get as much help as I can from the private sector, and I wanna give away thousands and thousands.
Did you wanna say anything else?
No. Thank you very much for this, like, for the computer, we really, really need it. And we appreciate it, everything that he's doing for us, and like, it's great.
In Pacoima, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Low-income students from Pacoima Charter and San Fernando High School were among those chosen to receive the technology. Well, how many ways can you love Mother Earth? The Tarzana Earth Day Celebration serves as a reminder for the many ways and many reasons to give the planet a little TLC. Anna Marcos takes us there.
On this day, there is more green taking center stage, and lots more kids of all ages carting trees and plants home.
I'm a tree lover, you know. The reason I live in this community, because, you know, this is a green, green community, and I love it.
But tree-loving isn't the only thing going on at the 6th Annual Earth Day Celebration in Tarzana. This is a time to celebrate all things nature, like the birds, the bees, and the butterflies.
We're urging people to plant native plants to feed the butterflies, because most caterpillars can only eat native plants. And then if we feed butterflies, caterpillars, then we support baby birds. So only natives support the ecosystem, and they also use 80% less water.
We want people to understand the greatness about environmentalism and taking ownership in your community to really make it a place that'll be beautiful for everyone to grow and to learn and play.
There are Learn to Live Green demos and something for the kids, too, like this nature-loving poster contest.
The nice thing about this event, it brings the community together. It gets us to meet each other, to make friends with each other.
The big message, plant a tree or a plant or something to give back to the planet and learn to conserve water and all the resources that are becoming more and more precious on Planet Earth. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Performances, food trucks, face painting, and more were also part of the action. Well, you hear a lot about rising tuition at local universities, but not at LA's community colleges. In fact, one year's tuition is on them for high school graduates of LA Unified. Gil Reyes has more.
This pep rally at Franklin High School is getting teens pumped for college, a big incentive, zero tuition for a year.
Guaranteed seat in community college if you graduate from our school district. Is that awesome?
You heard it right, one full year of free LA Community College education for any student graduating from LA Unified schools. This free program starts this fall semester. And it's LA high school students graduating in June who'll be able to take advantage first. The program, called America's College Promise, was launched by former President Barack Obama.
It really starts to change their way of thinking about themselves, about their community, and about their options for the future.
In the audience, undergrads from Eagle Rock, Marshall, and Highland Park High. School officials and alumni encouraging them to go to college and pursue their dreams, and starting this fall at a discount.
Just keep pushing forward, like, through the fear, and even if it seems overwhelming, you can definitely do it. We're all up here examples that it can be done.
Many of the soon-to-be high school grads already know they're going to college.
Everyone in here is capable to reach above and beyond, to reach for the skies.
Education is the passport to the future. For tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today.
Don't let anything step in the way of you and your dreams, and no matter what, give it your all.
Words to live by. In Highland Park, I'm Gil Reyes, LA This Week.
The Office of Mayor Garcetti raised nearly $2 million to pay for at least half the cost of the program's first year. The eventual goal is to provide free community college for all. More than 500 teachers are signing on to get art back in the schools through a project with the Getty Foundation and the LA Promise Fund. Anna Marcos has more on the debut party at Alvera Street.
So get some Micheladas in you, man. Get warmed up, let's have a good time, and it's all about art tonight, right?
This is an invitation for LA schoolteachers to knock back a drink, have a popsicle, grab some guacamole, and sign up to spread art, in this case, Latino art in the schools.
And then they'll be able to put some lesson plans together so that they can bring the art into their classrooms.
The Getty Foundation has teamed up with LA schoolteachers and the LA Promise Fund for its new project, Pacific Standard Time LA LA, which opens in California museums in the fall. It's an exhibit on the work of Latino and Latin American artists.
People think they may know, or they may think they know, Latin American and Latino art, and their minds will be blown by the variety of art that they'll, that will be on view. So they'll get a greater understanding of the cultural heritage that really is, you know, more than 50% of the population traces its roots to Latin America.
To get students and teachers connected to art, Getty organizers are handing out grants to pay for teacher training and museum field trips. There's also grant money for an art challenge where students create their own works of art.
Students all across Southern California will get the opportunity to see artworks that reflect themselves.
I'm the burnt skid marks left at the crossroad, the corners where the homies once stood.
A little spoken word, just another outlet for creativity. These teachers are soaking in the vibe as they get ready to put art back into the three Rs. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Organizers estimate only about 3% of class time in LA schools is spent on teaching creative arts. Well, turning now to a lesson on the environment, volunteers have finished planting hundreds of trees to replace hundreds of others killed off during years of drought. Gil Reyes reports on this long-term investment in Elysian Park.
These volunteers believe one day, all this hard work will pay off.
A lot of steps to remember and trying to dig up the hole in dirt. This looks pretty tough, but I can do it.
Volunteers planting more trees today in Elysian Park. It's the last in a series of plantings sponsored by the company Boise Paper and led by the city's Tree Planting Campaign, known as City Plants.
325 trees total through three different plantings that we started in the fall, but we've lost hundreds of trees in Elysian Park because of this drought over the past several years.
So Councilman Mitch O'Farrell says it's important to replace the trees we've lost for scenery, shading, and for the survival of area wildlife in the city's oldest park. Planters in Elysian Park are testing out a relatively new technique using biodegradable boxes, also known as landlife cocoons. Filled with water, sealed, and then buried with the tree roots, these extra steps are believed to greatly increase a tree's chances of survival. Protective mesh is also buried to ward off any gophers.
Our patience will be rewarded, and our kids will have a greener city than the one that we received.
We shall see when these eucalyptus, peppermint gum, pine, and desert willow trees reach maturity in about 15 to 30 years. In Elysian Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The German company that makes Landlife Cocoon says they can increase a tree's survival rate by as much as 95%. From planting trees in the community to planting trees in your backyard, the city is giving residents in Sherman Oaks free trees to help keep the planet green. Anna Marcos shows us what it's all about.
Springtime is definitely in the air in Sherman Oaks as the Say Hello to Spring Tree Giveaway hands out 250 baby plants so residents can plant fruit and shade trees in their own yards.
Oh, I'm gonna do it, totally. I'm just gonna, like, dig a hole with my dad, and then we're just gonna put it into the ground. And water it every day. I'm gonna help, too.
Actually, Carmen, the woman who works at the post office, when she was delivering mail, said, hey, they're giving out free trees down in the park. So my roommate and I came down and adopted one.
I think it's a great event. It's like welcoming the spring, this beautiful weather, and it's great having the community come out here, get a tree.
The Tree Giveaway is a joint effort by the city, the Department of Water and Power, the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, and City Plants. The city holds about 100 of these events a year, handing out 20,000 trees, a win-win for residents and for Mother Earth.
And we really do care about the environment and conservation, and we're anxious for people to plant trees.
A young tree, like the ones that we're giving away today, will use about 15 gallons of water a week, and that is about the amount of one five-minute shower. It's actually a really great way to keep your yard green. Trees have a life cycle, just like everything else, and a lot of LA's beautiful, older trees are actually getting to a point where they're starting to pass away due to old age. So it's really, really important that we continue to plant new trees.
In return, residents get shade, beauty, and a better and cleaner planet. And it all starts with a tiny one of these. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Residents at the event also got free mulch and free rain barrels, as well as other water and power conservation gadgets. Well, new rules for the LAPD as officials attempt to reduce use-of-force confrontations. The city helps residents clean out their garage and protect the environment at the same time. And city officials encourage folks to be prepared in case of a disaster. All these stories in City B. The Los Angeles Board of Police Commissioners approved new policies that call on officers to use more de-escalation techniques before resorting to deadly force. The changes come amid a heightened focus on police shootings, both in LA and across the country, as the commission has worked to decrease the number of deadly encounters between officers and the public. One of the changes states that officers shall attempt to control an incident by using time, distance, communications, and available resources in an effort to de-escalate the situation whenever it is safe and reasonable to do so. Police Chief Charlie Beck voiced support for the policy change, which he said was negotiated with the Los Angeles Police Protective League, the union representing rank-and-file officers. Union leaders had voiced concern over the changes when they were first brought forward. Council District 1 and LA Sanitation hosted an oil recycling and collection event at the Montecito Heights Recreation Center. The city holds these events in different areas several times a year as a service to the community. Folks were able to drop off old TVs, computers, cellphones, used motor oil, oil filters, and old paint.
There's nowhere to throw it away, and you shouldn't be putting it into your drains, and you shouldn't be putting it down your sink. You should drop it off somewhere where people can take care of it.
An emergency preparedness expo was held recently in Century City. The expo featured vendor tables with information about keeping safe during disasters. Officials from the Los Angeles Fire and Police Departments, along with the American Red Cross and Community Emergency Response Teams, or CERT, were on hand, providing information on how folks can prepare and become trained to handle a disaster.
As in the event of a large-scale emergency like an earthquake, people need to realize that we're not there for them. We're gonna be busy taking care of the big stuff, and you have to learn to take care of yourself.
Because again, you know, always be prepared for something to happen, earthquake or disaster, you know, make sure that you have clothing, you know, additional food or whatever in your car. Let people know where you're at at all times.
Step by step, Angelenos are working to reduce our need for imported water. The latest creation, so-called rain gardens in South LA. Anna Marcos shows us what they're all about.
One, two.
And just like that, with a shovel full of dirt, a new rain garden is born. The University Park Neighborhood Rain Gardens Project helps capture more water for a thirsty city, and it will help make this corner of South LA a little greener and more sustainable.
It also is an opportunity for us to join sidewalk repair with water conservation, and what they do is help us prepare our city for the future so that we can capture the water that we do get.
The so-called rain gardens are planters built into the curbside which grow native grasses and plants. They help redirect stormwater runoff from the street and allow it to seep into the ground to be cleaned and filtered by plants and soil. Then it seeps back into the water table.
The two areas that are most opportune for doing green infrastructure are the Northeast Valley and South LA. That's because both of these areas are geographically located above our groundwater basins, and so we can actually do infiltration in those areas.
And what you see here before you today is a great example of how we're gonna transform our relationship with water.
For the neighbors, added bonuses, a more beautiful street, and a better quality of life.
We get to see the neighborhood start improving bit by bit, and we like it. The young school kids that walk past every day, we can talk to them about how to save the community, because they're the next generation of kids, the young people that's gonna grow up.
And the greening of the streets is about to spread. City leaders will build 35 of these rain gardens in South LA. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Head out for a fishing trip in the city. A lineup of puppets takes center stage at the Skirball, and Asian filmmakers show off their cinematic skills. All this and this week's Things to Do. Get your kids hooked on fishing at the Lincoln Park Youth Fishing Derby. Fishing rods, reels, tackle, and bait will all be provided if you don't have your own. The event is free for kids 15 and younger. The Youth Fishing Derby takes place at Lincoln Park Lake on April 29 from 8:00 a.m. to noon. The park is located at 3501 Valley Boulevard. Celebrate the art of puppetry and the power of stories at the Skirball's annual Puppet Festival, featuring new and classic tales told with a delightful array of puppets, live music, and art making. This campus-wide, day-long festival brings together talented puppeteers and artists working in a range of cultural and artistic styles, from shadow puppets to giant pageant puppets. A day of imaginative storytelling is sure to amaze visitors ages 2 to 102. Don't miss this special festival finale performed by Noah's Ark storytellers and puppeteers. It all takes place on Sunday, April 30 from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For more, visit skirball.org. The 33rd Los Angeles Asian Pacific Film Festival kicks into high gear. Since 1983, the festival has presented nearly 5,000 films, videos, and digital media works by Asian international and Asian Pacific American artists, and additionally, features seminars and panels, in-person guest appearances, and filmmaker awards. The festival continues to be the largest festival of its kind in Southern California and is the premier showcase for the best and brightest of Asian Pacific American and international cinema. It all takes place April 27 through May 4. For more, visit festival.vconline.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Mike from Los Angeles. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning, good morning. Today is April 28th. It's Friday. Shhh. I want to welcome all of you to Los Angeles City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Before we start our meeting today, I want to ask and urge all of the individuals in and around this building to participate at noon in our Hands Around City Hall, where we will go outside, lock arms, in a show of unity around this building. And maybe we'll be able to do it a couple of times. For those that are listening in the building, if you're in the main City Hall, if you're on floors 1 through 6, you are to come and exit from the Spring Street exit on the 7th through the 12th floor, First Street from 13th through the 18th, Temple Street, and for floors 19 and above, Main Street, City Hall East, floors 1 through 3, Temple Street, floors 4 through 7, Main Street, 7th floor and up, Spring Street, and for City Hall South, floors 1 through 4, First Street, 4 through 8, Spring Street. And there should be individuals to direct you as to where to go. So please exit from those areas so that we have a really uniformed and united optical display a little later today. So with that said, Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll? Okay, we have technical, technical difficulties. Let's try it now, Madam Clerk.
Bloominfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sidio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. 12 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of minutes.
Ms. Martinez moves. Mr. Weezer seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rue moves, and Mr. Price seconds. Next. Okay, wait a minute. Now, let me just say, we're not going to have these sounds, Mr. Herman or Mr. Spindler. So if I hear it again, you're disturbing this meeting, you'll be asked to leave. Okay, so, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue 1I to May 26, 2017, receive and file 1M, D, F, inasmuch as the liens were paid in full, receive and file 1L inasmuch as the property is owner-occupied, single-family dwelling and exempt from lien processing, receive and file 1B inasmuch as the property is exempt from lien due to ownership change, and to reduce the lien for 1K to $932.40 inasmuch as the lien was partially paid, sir.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Please continue.
Item number 1 is an item notice for a public hearing. And, Mr. President, there are cards on 1.
Okay, then continue.
Items 2 through 8 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8 have been posted, submitted, circulated for council's consideration, sir.
Okay, specials members? I don't see any. Why don't we prepare then to vote on these items? Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue.
Items 9 through 11 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Mr. President, there are cards on 9, 10, 11, and 12, sir.
Okay, so then I guess we continue?
Oh, I'm sorry. On the continuation agenda, there is item 12, and that is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
So again, without objection, that item is now before this body. Do you have cards on this item?
Yes, Mr. President. There is a card on 12.
Okay, continue.
That brings council to items called special or presentation, sir, and/or the council can go into the special meeting if it wishes.
Okay, why don't we move quickly to a presentation? I'm going to ask Ms. Martinez if she would come to the President's chair. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President and members. I'm just going to show this pup to the young people that we have visiting us today. Isn't she beautiful? Anyway, so we have some special guests with us today. I will let, a little later, I'm sure they will be introduced. But what I want to say to the young people, today is Pet Adoption Friday. And so I have before this council a chihuahua, long-haired chihuahua mix who has all of her shots, and she's ready to go. She is three months old. Her name is Biscuit, and she's looking for a home. She will not get much bigger than this. You guys need to get on your cellphones and call your mommies, call your daddy, tell them that you're bringing home a surprise. But anyway, Biscuit is looking for a home. And as all of the members in this council know, and those that are watching us on television, and those that work in this building, we have a 100% dog adoption rate, and right now we have Biscuit who is looking for a home. She was turned into the shelter, and not only is she gorgeous, but if you're looking for unconditional love, I tell you, you want to find that, you find it in a companion animal. Now, it's fun to stand before you and try to find a home for this nice little doggy, but what you're doing more than that, you're saving a life. We do the best we can to get as many of our dogs, and cats, and other animals adopted, but we are only successful because of the help that we get from the public. So what I'm asking, if you're looking for unconditional love, if you want to do something that is really a good thing, then let's save this doggy's life. Let's give her a home. I mean, let's, she, you can just tell that she enjoys being on television. She enjoys being here today. Her name is Biscuit. I'm with Arlene, who, closer, let's get a shot, who's one of the great individuals that we have that works with us for Animal Services. She and I have been doing this together for many, many years, and so she will stick around for a little while. So if someone wants to come and take a photo of her to send back to their mom, or dad, or roommate, or husband, or wife, she will be available so that you could do that. But let us, let's not walk out of this chambers today without finding a home for Biscuit. Now, if you're watching us on television, call 888-452-9381. Most of our animals are adopted by individuals that are either visiting with us in the chambers or people that are watching this on television. They're usually members that work in the City Hall complex. So let's get a close-up of Biscuit. She's looking for a home. She is ready to go right now. She's got her shots. She is ready to go. Again, you're looking for unconditional love. Look at that face. Not mine, hers. Look at that face.
That's a beautiful close-up.
Okay, so, anyway, Arlene, you're going to be in the back for a while. She does not believe that Biscuit's going to get much bigger, big, bigger than this. So let's have a, let's really start this Friday off right. Let's have somebody quickly come up and adopt Biscuit and take her home. So with that said, I'm going to have Arlene kind of walk her around, let the kids look at her again, and anyone else in the chambers. Arlene will be in the back. Please come forward. Let us know if you want her, and we will definitely process the paperwork, and in 15 minutes, you'll be taking her home. You'll be going to PetSmart, getting a bed. Anyway, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Boys and girls, raise your hands if you'd like to take Biscuit home. There we go. Mr. Bloominfield?
I wanted to let you know who the kids are in the audience who have joined us today. They're wonderful children from the Walden School, 4th and 5th graders. Give it up for them.
Let's have them stand up. Stand up, boys and girls.
Stand up, guys, so we can see you.
Stand up, see yourself on TV.
See yourself on TV. We have your teachers, Janet Che, Grace Parcubas, Sidney Maricelsi, Tiffany Hough, Jordan Frazier, Alexandra Santucci, or Patricia Hein. Wonderful school. Thank you for joining us. And I know a little bit later, some of those kids actually have signed up for public comments, so don't be surprised if you hear a little bit from some of these fine young people who are here today to see democracy in action.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bloominfield. And welcome. Well, thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. And welcome, boys and girls.
In fact, you know what, since we do, again, let's make sure we find a home for Biscuit. But, Mr. Bloomingfield, it's my understanding that you do have some young people that signed up for public comment. Why don't we, I said, Malinaro, Juliana Malcolm, Hideo Latham? Let's have them come to the little center aisle, just where I was just there, help them with the microphone. We'll let you go one at a time. Just state your name.
I'm Severio Fennel Malinaro. I am in Janet and Jordan's 4th and 5th grade class at Walden School. We, the 4th and 5th grade of Walden School, believe that everyone should be treated with equality and respect. We value friendship, kindness, and integrity, hope, and empathy. We respect each other's creativity, individuality, and differences. We are confident and perseverant. We hope that we will carry all these things with us and make positive changes in our community.
Thank you. So who's our, who's our next speaker, if you'd come up and let us know what your name is?
I'm Juliana Malcolm.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, members of the LA City Council. Our names are Juliana Malcolm and Hideo Latham, and we're representing the 4th and 5th graders from Walden School in Pasadena. We are here on a field trip to see our government in action. To prepare for our field trip, we were doing some research about the LA City Council, and it came to our attention that there's only one woman out of 15 council members. We think that there should be more women and women of color on the council because the government represents us, and we feel that it doesn't represent us well if there's only one woman. We also watched a TED Talk about a woman who ran for president of Iceland, and she said that women can stop believing in themselves if they don't see other women running for office. She talked about a day in 1975 where women protested by not working, and nothing worked that day because there were no women. We wonder what it feels like for Councilwoman Nuri Martinez when she wants to give, she wants to speak up and give her full perspective because she makes up such a small percentage among all of these men on the council.
That's why we think that there should be more women on the council. We're not saying that you should just quit and give up your seat, but you won't be on the council forever. You can mentor and support women to run for office in the future. Going forward, we want to see more women in these leadership positions. The council makes a lot of decisions that impact women, especially women of color and their futures. But we also hope that you consider the perspective of the public, which includes people of all different colors and cultures, transgender people, people with disabilities, homeless people, and kids. You were once kids, and maybe you felt that your ideas didn't matter because you were young, but you, now you're here and you're making the decisions. Are you making decisions that make Los Angeles a place that people want to be in? Are you making decisions that are good for the next generation? It's our futures that you're shaping. What you see, you can be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. And, and you are, you are correct. At one point, we were all kids, except for Paul Coretts. Paul was born, he was born that age and that size. He's been like that. But anyway, you're so welcome. We really enjoy having you here and to see you participate in government this early on. It bodes well for the future of this great city. Could we give the young people one more round of applause, and all of their teachers and parents? Okay, I'm going to do one of our multiple public comments. I'll call up Mr. Eric Previn, who will speak on items 1A through 1G, 10, 11, 12, 15, and 16. In fact, no, you can't speak on 15 and 16. You can speak, yet, you can speak on 10, 11, and 12, and the other items I mentioned earlier. Yes, sir?
Oh, is it because they're in a special meeting? Is that the, okay, fine. Thank you, thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn from Studio City, and I could not be more excited to see these young people down here addressing City Council. It brings great warmth to my heart to see young, engaged people. And in the future, we would like to see them in the same vivid color as we saw the puppy, because you made them very small, sir, like you do all the public. It's not a good way to go. Item number one is the lien item. This is the one where the City Council members around the horseshoe find violations from the LA Department of Building and Safety who've written up little citations that turn into, and this is the upsetting part, liens on their property. So this means like the elderly African-American gentleman who came over and tried to say, hey, I own the property, and then the guy brings him in the back and explains how they have to pay $3,500 for something from 10 years ago, and they go, but I can't afford that, and it's just very, very unfortunate. And I think we have to, we have to find a better solution and not do that. It's upsetting. Item number 10, I just have to say thank you to Mr. O'Farrell, who has really been duking it out for the public and for the various groups. The Muslim Council had a party in February during a time when he was being elected, so he was not able to pick up the $400 or $380 tab, whatever, $316 tab. So now he's doing it retroactively. What a, what a sweet and generous thought, because now at a time when we're all protecting all kinds of groups around America as we're under various attack, it's very nice of him to do that. It would also be nice for him to return the contributions that were given to him excessively.
Let's stay on this item.
No, we're going to stay on the item. The item is Mr. O'Farrell's diligence, and it is really, really helpful that he did that at City Hall Rotunda, where he picked up the city cost to bring in that group, and now we would just ask that he return the contributions.
Mr. Previn, stay on the item.
Thank you. Item number six, is that acceptable? This is my treasured partners at the county.
Mr. President, the speaker doesn't have a card on this, and this item has already been voted on?
I'm sorry, it's measure eight.
No, Mr. Previn, speak on the items that were identified, which were 10, 11, and I believe 12 and one. You had items one through 1/8, all the way to G, I think.
Well, sir, I've already spoken about the liens. I wanted to talk about the West Washington issue in your district, which is the nuisance revocation proceedings. Is that on the agenda?
It's been voted on, Mr. Previn.
Okay, so you're playing games with the agenda, so I'm going to stop.
Nobody's playing games, but you are playing games.
No, no, let's go to the general public comment.
Let's go to his general public comment.
I agree, and sir, I do not play games. You're the one who...
You're playing games right now.
Now I'm in general public comment, right. So here's the game, okay? Strafan Faubel's your lawyer, and he has said in front of all these nice people that you're complying with the rule that says that all of the people who participate in public meetings will be shown the same on the telecast when they go home and watch. They'll be able to judge for themselves, and then they'll decide who's playing games, okay? You don't want people to be visual in this environment because they sometimes bring criticism. That's not appropriate. That's not appropriate at all. So I would ask simply that going forward, you look at the Rule 93. You ask Mr. Faubel to put in writing if he really thinks it's okay to show the puppy in living color, and then when these kids come up, or people like me, little kids in a big guy suit, and want to share what they think and they know, and write about, sometimes I write in CityWatchLA.com, you could read about it, or sometimes I write in the Daily News, because I care about my community. I want to share with people what's going on. Like up in HHH earlier this week, where we're spending lots of money the voters approved for homeless help, and we want to do it, we really do, we all voted for it. We don't want the money to be shifted this way and that without real publicity.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, and again, I want, before we move on to our next presentation, I again want to remind everyone that at around noon today, we hope to have hands around City Hall, and we would love to have all of you participate, depending on what floor you're on. In the main City Hall, if you're on floors 1 through 6, a few minutes before noon, if you'd go through the Spring Street exit, 7 through 12, First Street, 13 through 18, Temple Street, 19 and above, Main Street. If you are on City, in City Hall East, floors 1 through 3, Temple, 4 through 7, Main, 7 and up, Spring. And if you're in City Hall South, the 1 through 4, First Street, 5 through 8, Spring Street, again, that's at about 10 minutes to noon, exit. We'll have people that will direct you, and we will surround this complex and hold hands in a show of unity, and to also acknowledge those who lost their lives 25 years ago. So I want to look to Mr. Kokorian. We're going to move into our first presentation of the day, and so with that said, Mr. Kokorian, the floor belongs to you, sir.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President and members. I'm delighted to have our great mayor, Eric Garcetti, standing by my side as he always does when we commemorate the Armenian genocide. As you all know, this is the 102nd anniversary of the Armenian genocide, and for as long as I've been here, and in fact, for many years before, I've come here and spoke to you about the horrors of that period of the 20th century. And many of you have attended other events, many of you have even spoken and tried to put into words what it means to you to remember the horrors of the Armenian genocide. And you, like I, have struggled to try to find words that can sufficiently convey what a genocide really means. And I struggle with it every year, and I realize that whatever I say, my, I can describe the experiences of my family, I can describe specific things that happened to specific people, and yet still, my words seem completely inadequate. We understand the facts, we understand intellectually, but it's very difficult to take this pain and grief and anguish into our souls from words alone. But film can do that, and we've seen it time and time again, where we understand things intellectually, but it really took a great film to make us feel that experience in our souls. I've walked on the landing beaches at Normandy, but I didn't know about D-Day until I saw Saving Private Ryan. And in a similar way, as much as I've tried to capture the Armenian genocide, everything that I've done has been inadequate compared to a major motion picture that was released last week called The Promise. We're here today to honor The Promise. I saw it last week, and I can tell you, there's, I've had very few experiences like this in my life. This film took us into the killing fields of Derzor. This film made us feel what it would be like to be in the death marches through the desert. This film took us into the boxcars, crammed with people being taken to death camps, desperate for a drop of rainwater to quench their thirst. This film also made us, as individuals, feel a part of the resistance at Musadakh. So all of these things that we might have known intellectually became a part of our soul when we watched this film, and it's such a great privilege for me to be able to recognize these incredible artists who brought this to us. And that would be enough to recognize this film. But the production of this film also speaks to the consequences of denialism and historical revisionism. Because as, as we've discussed here before, by way of example, The Forty Days of Musadakh was one of the most popular novels in the world in the 1930s. It told the story of the Armenian genocide and Armenian resistance to Turkish atrocities. And MGM was ready to make a motion picture out of that novel. They'd bought the rights, they had cast Clark Gable to play the lead in the film, and the Turkish government got busy. And at the highest levels of our State Department, working on behalf of the Turkish government, there was pressure brought at the highest levels of MGM to kill that film before it could be released, and they succeeded. That film died, and with the death of that film came the beginning of a century of denialism that continues until this very day. So it's especially important that we now have, because of the vision and generosity of a man who would end up owning MGM, Kirk Kokorian, we now have this film that has stood up against that same pressure, and our producers will talk about that, I hope, stood up against that denialism, stood up against this hate-filled revisionism, and gotten this movie produced, gotten this movie into theaters, and gotten the tremendous international reaction that this film is already producing. So with that, I want to go ahead and introduce to you a brief trailer from the film before we invite our mayor and our city controller to speak.
The world is at your feet, Mikhail. Too ask proud.
You're going to become a doctor?
Yes, it's my passion.
Christopher Myers.
Chris is a style reporter for the Associated Press. A toast to old friends and you.
Anna is a fine woman, Mikhail.
You make me feel I've come home.
She's very fond of you. It's obvious.
It's very dangerous for Armenians right now. I want to get you out of here.
If it's not safe for me, then it's not safe for any of my people.
What is the Associated Press doing reporting? I'm a war. There is no war here.
No one here is safe. I have to get us out of here before there's no time left.
I was told that you're organizing this game, right?
How can I help?
Do you love them?
Mikhail, run!
You trust no one.
Chris?
We will build a future together.
Mr. President, it's my great honor to be able to present to the council our great mayor, Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Kokorian. Thank you for your friendship over many decades now. And it was in this chamber, before we had an Armenian-American council member here, that each year, I was proud to present with Armenian community our commemoration to speak truth to every lie that we heard, to make sure that we not only kept the promise, but spoke the truth. And this is something that I think Los Angeles can be very proud of. Very proud that unabashedly, righteously, and together, not just with our Armenian brothers and sisters, but all of us, that we speak up and speak out every single year to recognize what was the first planned mass genocide of modern history, one that set in motion other genocides, and a change in consciousness of international law, and for all of us to keep our eyes out on the hatred that can lead from one act to a dozen
to a dozen, to a thousand, to a million. And yet, this one is one that's still unsettled, one that we don't want to come together each year to demand anything but just to remember. It is a perversion of history that we have to come forward to make sure, as Eli Wiesel has said, that it's not just the dead who have been killed, but it is forgetting them that kills them a second time. And for all of us to make sure that those memories we've had here in these chambers, survivors, now we're at the years where really there are almost none left. And it's up to us, those who have actually met real survivors who bore testament and witness to the horrors of this genocide, for us to tell the stories that we knew them and that we were with them and that we heard their stories and that their sons and daughters and their grandchildren and great-grandchildren live amongst us and have helped build a great city. This and arguably the second most important Armenian city in the world. A place where we have sister-city relationships with our communities in Yerevan and in Beirut and other places. A place where our political life and our cultural life and our economic life has been made strong. Where we have leaders and CLA's office and leaders that are in our departments who head up, as general managers, two of our general managers, folks who have contributed literally to the strength and protection of this city. We owe them and we owe them who came before them a recognition of this. And I want to thank Eric and Mike for the work that they did to bring this movie forward. You know, people get sick of talking about the Holocaust, but then Schindler's List comes about and people remember and feel it again. People think that we've said it so many times, why are you talking about it again? Why do the Armenians always talk about the genocide? Why do the Jews always mention the Holocaust? It's because until we have that peace and that turning of a page, today, as we commemorate twenty-five years after unrest in this city, we know that those currents exist in all of us as human beings. And those who are the victims have responsibility to tell the truth. And those who are descendants of those who had perpetrated need to be freed from that by acknowledging what we know. Here in this town that used to be full of Indians, where we had a workforce that built this city that was primarily Indians, until they died off, we have to remember them because we wouldn't be here, standing here today, were it not for them. We have to remember the Armenians that were part, scattered around the Ottoman Empire, and offer our Turkish brothers and sisters, as Germany has done with the Holocaust, a way out. Denialism doesn't just trap the victims. It traps those folks too, in those countries that would deny. And so, thank you to Councilmember Kirkorian and thank you to this film. I hope everybody will take time to see it. As Councilmember Kirkorian, who knows a thing or two about film, said, "It's actually a really great movie. The Love Story." Go in to see the Love Story and go out learning the history. Go in to hear the humanity and come out being even more determined to make sure that we speak that truth. We saw it. People who, because of their religion, were mowed down by those who hated them. Today, we have priests with us who show that the resilience of this nation can never be extinguished. And the resilience of all of us can never be extinguished as long as we speak up and speak out. So, thank you very much. And Los Angeles stands proudly to say that we remember. Not only do we remember, we will act to make sure that we will take the living memory of those who are still with us today and make sure this never happens again. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. And, Mr. President, I'd like to now invite to the microphone our great city controller, Ron Galperin.
Welcome, Mr. Controller. Let's give him a round of applause.
Good morning, Mr. President. Thank you so very much, Mr. Kirkorian, for putting this together. It's really an important morning. Who, after all, speaks today of the annihilation of the Armenians? This was the question that, in 1939, Hitler posed right before he invaded Poland. And the fact that the answer at that time was that not many people were speaking of it gave license to Hitler to go into Poland and to begin what, of course, we know today was the Shoah, the Holocaust. So, I take this very, very personally as the son of a Holocaust survivor, the importance that we remember. Because if we do not remember, if we do not tell the stories, if we do not remember those who lost their lives, those who survived, and what brought about such evil, then we are, in many ways, damned to repeat it. And unfortunately, we see throughout our globe genocides that continue. So, we have a, dare I say, holy obligation. I remember vividly a conversation that I had back in October. And this was at a dinner of the Armenian National Committee. Mike Mettevoi was there. And he was talking very passionately about making of this movie and why it was so important to him. And I'm sure he's going to speak today. But what stood in my mind was, he actually was born in Shanghai and was born to parents who fled the atrocities of the Holocaust and ended up being refugees in Shanghai and took that experience as a very important reason to tell these stories. And he, along with his fellow filmmakers, have done exactly that. They're doing what's in Jewish tradition is known as a mitzvah, which is a commandment to actually retell and to make sure that everybody knows the lessons of the Armenian genocide so that we can hopefully prevent these things from happening in the future. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to be here. And again, thank you so much, Councilmember Kirkorian.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Controller Galperin. You know, when any atrocity like this happens, long after the homes have turned to ashes and the bones of the victims have turned to dust, long after the last surviving elderly witness has passed from this earth, the last evidence remaining of man's inhumanity to man is our remembrance of it. And if that's ever extinguished, then so is our ability to fight against genocide as it occurs in the future. And I'm thrilled that because of the production of this movie, The Promise, that memory will not be extinguished. It will be passed on to future generations. It will be passed on to people who might not otherwise know the first thing about the Armenian genocide, but because they go to see this great film, they will learn. And it does one other thing as well. Kirk Kirkorian saw fit to finance this film. But all of the proceeds from this film will be devoted to human rights charities. This film will not make one penny of profit. Every bit of its profit will be turned over, every bit of its proceeds will be turned over to charities supporting human rights causes. So, with that, I'd like to invite up two of the producers of this film. First of all, one of the pillars of Hollywood for many, many years, Mike Mettevoi, the founder of Orion Pictures, former chairman of TriStar Pictures and head of production of United Artists, the producer of films that you've known and loved like Black Swan and Thin Red Line. So, I'd like to invite up Mike Mettevoi. And also, producer Eric Israelean, who was one of Kirk Kirkorian's close and trusted friends, who has given the responsibility of bringing this vision that Mr. Kirkorian had to life and who has done it magnificently. He also serves as a full-time faculty member at the Geffen School of Medicine at the University of California, Los Angeles, Eric Israelean. And I'd like to also invite up somebody that you may know as the front man for System of a Down. But also, he's been somebody who has contributed so much to all sorts of human rights causes around the world. He's been a vocal fierce advocate, one might even say a screamer, about the Armenian genocide. And he was the executive music director of this film, Serge Tonkin.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you so much, councilmembers. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kirkorian, thank you for inviting us and for dedicating this. My job over the years, which is now fifty-two years and I'm on my three-hundred-and-twenty-fifth film, has been to make films that I felt, in some way, would touch people. I knew that, as a child, growing up both in China and in Chile, that those films changed my life. And I never thought I'd wind up making them. But the films that I've been able to do, I knew had some impact. Whether it was Apocalypse Now or Coming Home or Dances with Wolves or Philadelphia, I thought those films would touch people. When I was approached to do this film, I didn't have to think twice. I just wanted to make sure that I did it the way, the most professional way, that I could figure out how to do it. And I'm really, really proud to be a part of this film. And I want to thank not only Kirk, who I knew years, a number of years, but Eric Israelean, who really is the heart and soul of making this movie because there was no stone unturned until he knew he got it right. Both for him, Kirk, and the Armenian people. And I think he'd still be applauded for it, and I want to applaud him myself.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Kirkorian and the entire Los Angeles City Council were honored. We're honored to be part of a city that recognizes not only these dark chapters of the past, but also focuses on human rights in the world today, including in our city. And that's really part of the mission of the film. As Mike mentioned, you know, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the generosity and dedication of Kirk Kirkorian, who was not only a hero of the Armenian nation, but he was a hero and Angelino. And he loved Los Angeles. And it would bring him tremendous pride to know that we were being honored in this way today. I also just wanted to mention how important this film is not only to the Armenian people, but for people around the world who are in danger and in the way of potential human rights atrocities. We had the great fortune, thanks to Mr. Kirkorian, to be able to donate all of the proceeds from the film to charitable organizations. And we know that, long after we are gone, that the schools and communities will be teaching about the Armenian genocide, thanks to The Promise, and to be able to use those lessons to try to help people in the world today. And I know Armenians feel that way. They feel that what happened to the Armenian people, despite the horror, is an opportunity to learn and to teach and to move forward. And while we feel like the Armenian genocide is definitely in the past, it needs to be recognized because of the fact that these patterns keep repeating themselves over and over again around the world. The Promise Institute for Human Rights, which we announced just recently at UCLA, will enable people to study and have advocacy and research and education around the realm of human rights. So, it's a tremendous honor for us. And from experienced political people like yourselves, it's just interesting to me that we have a subject matter that is bipartisan. We have people tweeting about it like Michael Moore and Glenn Beck. And I don't know how often that happens, but you all know that that's a minor miracle in and of itself. So, because it's about human rights, we're extremely grateful. We're extremely honored. Thank you very much.
I just want to say one thing. The fact that genocide is happening right now in Syria, in the Derzor Desert, you know, ISIS has laid the bones of Yazidis over the bones of our ancestors. The visuals of that, the symbolism of that is not to be taken lightly. That is why this film and the awareness having to do with the genocide is very important. Ever since we said "never again" after World War II and the Holocaust, we've still been experiencing genocide in Rwanda, in Sudan, many places in the world. It's finally time for us to set up some type of executive capability around the world, whether it's through United Nations or not just ad hoc committees, but some type of executable body that fights genocide that's more serious than anything that we have on the planet. Because this is the human disease that's not going, that doesn't seem to be going away. Thank you.
Mr. Kirkorian, if it's okay with you, I'd like to recognize Mr. Paul Coretz at this time.
Indeed, thank you.
Mr. Coretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Kirkorian, for bringing this before us. Obviously, as a son of a Holocaust survivor and having lost many family members in the Holocaust, I feel a great kinship with the Armenian people. And I found out about the Armenian genocide first at a class in UCLA, where I was taught that there was a supposed Armenian genocide, but it had never actually taken place. And once I looked into that further and realized how much of a lie that was, aided by hundreds of protesters at our class, I really never felt so betrayed. And really, the only thing worse than the unthinkable genocide that took place is the fact that the Turkish government, a hundred and two years later, still denies that it ever happened. We obviously have a certain amount of anger towards Germany in the past as Jews, but we don't have that same kind of feeling towards the Germany of today. And we just had a Yom HaShoah event in which the German consul attended and was applauded and recognized and treated with respect and even admiration. And it's very clear, they have acknowledged without any ambiguity that the Holocaust took place, that they were responsible for it. They've paid reparations. They participate in remembrances at some of the actual sites and literally do everything they could that is appropriate. The Turkish government does exactly the opposite. And I am proud, since I first got elected to office almost thirty years ago in West Hollywood, to have participated in remembrances like this. And I think we have to push harder and harder to put an end to this denial and to finally get the Turkish government to acknowledge their responsibility. And I think the longer they don't, the easier it is for other genocides to take place. And we know there are multiple genocides taking place in the world right as we speak. And we should do everything we can to make that more difficult. And I think this remembrance does that. And I think this is a particularly important year because we now actually have a film that visualizes what happened, makes it clearer and more understandable for people, and will always be a reminder and a helpful reminder of that. And I thank all the folks who were involved in this film for bringing it forward. And I know we'll all keep fighting until the Armenian genocide is finally recognized and until we put a halt to the other genocides that are taking place.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Kirkorian, for always bringing home the importance of this incredible history. And I just want to say to the creators of The Promise, thank you for bringing this film forward because, as many of us know, arts can illuminate the truth, oftentimes, I would argue, most of the time, better than politics can. And the fact that we have this film now as a testament to what happened, to add to the vocabulary of the history of the genocide, the importance of that cannot be overstated enough. As the representative of Little Armenia in the Thirteenth District, I have the great honor of marching this past Monday along with our mayor, along with Bob Blumenfield and many, many others, including Adam Schiff, our congressman, in the seventeenth anniversary of the march through Little Armenia organized by the Unified Young Armenians. We will always continue doing that until Turkey recognizes and acknowledges the truth. And just to say that I was honored to stand with my colleague, Mr. Kirkorian, two years ago to dedicate Armenian Genocide Memorial Square on a city sign for the first time anywhere that we can recollect at the intersection of Hollywood and Western. I also want to acknowledge the work of my incredible staff, Star Parsamian and Aram Toslagian, who are here, who helped organize various events throughout the Thirteenth District in commemoration of not only the genocide, but the rich history and Armenian culture that can be seen throughout the city in the Thirteenth District. And, Mr. Kirkorian, you're absolutely right. Words are inadequate to express a genocide unless you've actually survived it yourself. But as descendants, we can certainly keep the flame alive. And I just have to say, as a descendant of a Native American tribe myself, I think it's high time we recognize the genocide that happened in our own country.
I think it's high time we recognize the genocide that happened in our own country over the course of hundreds of years across Native America, not to mention the African-American slave trade. And so I'm hopeful that as we move forward, this council will recognize, once and for all, Indigenous Peoples' Day to replace Columbus Day. That is something that I'm working on. I'm hoping to have the support of all my colleagues. I think the momentum is moving in the right direction to recognize that. And it's these large and small steps we take that really add to the full context of the truth. And I think at the local, state, and national level, and international level, we must always push, push, push. Otherwise, as you said, Mr. Controller Galperin, inevitably, the truth, the history will repeat itself. And so I just really commend everyone who promotes the truth and the history, because it just puts us in a better position for future generations to know what happened and to prevent it from ever happening again. Again, I commend the creators of this wonderful film, and thank you for your presence here at City Hall. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian, back to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you, members, for being, for your comments and for being so generous with your time. It's a privilege on all of your behalf for me to present resolutions to Mr. Israelian and to Mr. Medavoy as producers of this film. First of all, and for his lifetime of service and advocacy, really, on behalf of the Armenian genocide remembrances and other remembrances of atrocities and human rights violations throughout the world, I want to present to Serge Tonkin this resolution commemorating the 102nd anniversary of the Armenian genocide. Thank you all very much.
Now, thank you all. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you. Now, thank you again, and much success with the film. Okay, I want to take a couple of public comments. Claudia, just general, if you could switch back to general public comment. Claudio Bovell, Linda Lewin. Is there a Betty here? And Aaliyah, please come forward. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm wrong with Leah. So if I could get the people that I called, just come right on up and identify yourself.
First of all, my name is Claudio Bovell. I would like to know whether Councilman Weeza is here today? Mr. Weeza, the reason I came here today is for you, because I have to thank you very much for what you're doing for the renters in regards to the greed that exists among the property owners, landlords, and so forth. So I happen to see you on cable, what you're doing for these people who are getting illegally evicted, especially the seniors. And I wanted to ask you, Councilman Weeza, that if you can, focus on the capital improvement, illegal eviction, and most, what bothers me, the seniors. A lot of these property owners are using all kinds of tricks in the game to get rid of the seniors especially. And we all know capital improvement increases the rent, and then the seniors can't afford the rent.
Thank you, sir. If I could have the next speaker, please.
Good morning, Councilman Bonin. My name is Linda. You are right, I am incredibly lucky to be living in the 11th District. I bought my home 30 years ago as a single woman. I support a beautiful adult that is autistic. She was placed with me by DCFS when she was six years old. She is now 28 and thriving. Airbnb is not my first choice for the income I need to continually live in my home and receiving services from West Side Regional Center. I am a senior, and there are not a lot of employment opportunities. Restricting the number of days I host will affect me. Please do not put a cap on the number of days I can rent the room out in my home where I live. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Betty Kataviches. I live in Councilmember Mitchell Farrell's district. And I am concerned also about the proposed regulations that have to do, this is also about Airbnb, have to do with rent-controlled areas and the limited number of days I would be able to host. As a retired public school teacher and 16-year Los Angeles resident, my income is insufficient to pay my mortgage and other bills. I live in my house, in the house myself, and the space I offer is more like a detached bedroom than anything else. I hope that you will consider people like me when you draft this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to, we're gonna do some multi-comment. Mr. Walsh, if I could have Mr. Walsh on my screen. Mr. Walsh, you have numbers 1A, B.
You called me already. Do you not want me to come back? Do you want me to come later?
No, I made a mistake, and I... In fact, you know what, while you're here, why don't we just move? So can we switch to Leah? One second. Okay, so you have 1A, all the way through 1O.
Correct. And 12, and 17, but you're doing 17 later, correct?
Go ahead.
Can I do 17 or no?
No, it's already been dealt with.
How many?
It's in...
How many minutes do I have before you count my?
You have three minutes.
Okay. So, hi, my name is Leah. I'm the daughter of George Memzek, who saw active duty in World War II, flying on a B-29 bomber over the hump, doing many, many tours and having survived. One thing I know for certain is that nobody goes off to war so that their loved ones can be denied constitutional rights by their local government at home. And I appreciate that all of you want to uphold the truth and eliminate it, so you need to start today. I'm filing a criminal...
Mr. President, the speaker's not on the agenda.
I actually, I am. I'm talking about your A through O, and you're depriving my constitutional right. You have a pattern and practice, and I'm allowed to file a complaint for dereliction of duty.
No, 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 you have to stay on the item.
I am.
You can file whatever complaints you'd like.
I am. I'm allowed to file a complaint.
But get back on, you're on item one.
I'm filing a...
You're on item one.
Correct.
Get back on item one.
Council file A through zero. You, I'm filing a criminal complaint against you for dereliction of duty. Do you understand that? You are lying to the people, and you are deceiving them, and many of the people in the room. And you know what you're doing? You're denying them their ability to file a complaint, and you make them file an appeal. So that cuts off their base, and they cannot file a complaint. And therefore, they cannot put the right evidence into the record. And every single person who goes through this appeal process, look, there's no complaint, because you've separated that off. Okay, my next one. You have, you have notice, and I put it in your file today, for the harassment of people that are tenants. And Pacific Palisades Bowl Mobile Estates versus the City of Los Angeles is a California Supreme Court decision. And you have failed your duty, and you're about to kill 200 people that live there, and 80,000 people going up down the street, because it's an active landslide that your Bureau of Engineering says it is. And you are, your Building and Safety Department is going after little people in A through O, but you've got this huge, massive landslide with a 60-foot-high cut. It's a pattern and practice. And actually, I laid it out for you. It is a conspiracy against rights pursuant to Title 18 U.S.C., Section 241, and you are acting with criminal intent and the most...
Okay, now give her her one minute for general public comment.
Thank you very much. For everybody that's in this room and everybody in the City of Los Angeles and the world today, please ask the City of Los Angeles to start today to acknowledge and illuminate the truth. Four years and seven months, I have suffered enormous harm due to this city council and the mayor and Mr. Bonin, who have refused to uphold the rule of law in the City of Los Angeles. And I ask that you investigate today, because you are about to excavate the coastal bluff, and there's motive, it's called oil. Motive, you want to widen the highway. Motive, you want to put a hotel. And motive, you want to get rid of the low-income people that are living in that mobile home park. And you have not responded to one complaint in writing. And so all those people have no voice. So to go looking in all these other countries for voices, but you deny people here a voice, is beyond criminal. It's dereliction of duty and a violation of the constitutional rights. Thank you.
Thank you. So now, if we could get Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, you have 1A and B, and you have 9A through C, 10, 11, 12. And then when we get to the special, you'll be able to deal with your other items. So go ahead, sir.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number one, this is Building and Safety, you do a good job. Number nine is Rent Escrow Account, you do a good job for renters. When you do a good job, I say it. Number 10 is the Muslim Public Affairs Council. You spent $316 for food. That's fine, but there is a group that is not ever acknowledged. We want an atheist reception. I'm sure that the majority of people out here are atheists. And we love Muslims, we love Christians, but let's honor the atheists. Number 11, this is the Los Angeles Zoo. The Los Angeles Zoo is in terrible condition. Have you been out there lately? I mean, they don't feed the lines enough food, and they constantly roar. The lines are roaring, because the lines are being starved to death. So this is the Los Angeles Zoo Association, the volunteer program, and HollywoodHighlands.org. Remember, I don't squeeze all the time out. I say what I want to say, and then I leave. So you can now give me my one minute.
Go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
Okay, let's start with, as you know, for the past six months, there's been no English-language captioning on the monitors. In other words, you told deaf people to go screw themselves up the ass. The deaf and hard-of-hearing people complained, and we got back the captioning here so that deaf and hard-of-hearing people can come to the meetings, and they don't have to try to read lips using a telescope. And not, I hope you're not supposed to notice, but the mayor has a $3,000 hair weave. That means he's running for governor. That stuff on top of his head, it's bullshit. It's not real hair. Take a look at pictures of him a few months ago, but the newspaper, the cameras are on his side.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, could I get Mr. Herman's items? Okay, Mr. Herman, I have you for items 1A, 12... Wait a minute, that's, so you have...
Trump, get down!
You have, wait, 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 Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman. You have general public comment, you have 1A, and he has 12. So that means he gets two minutes, plus his one minute for general public comment. Then when we go into the special, he'll be able to speak on the other items. So, Mr. Herman, you're on 1A and item 12.
Whoa, what a riot. What, a quiet riot when it comes to the lanes? Because there's several issues here regarding CD7, a vacancy, but no representation. Who's gonna clear up the mess for CD7 on the lanes? Apparently not one of you. Thank you for getting quiet, because it's a fact. It's a fact. We're sick and tired of you putting lanes on our property illegally without certification by certified U.S. mail. Listen, rookie, I'm talking about the lanes. So here in particular manner is another lane, CD6. 13402 West Wingo Street, for $2,293. And what do I think about it? Fuck you. Now I'm going to item number, yeah, that number. Yeah, yeah, here it is, here it is. Item number 12. Continued consideration by Dawson and the jackass bald guy, Jose Weeza, relative to feasibility to adopt a tenant harassment. What does that mean? It means when Herman was taken out of his rent-controlled home and thrown in the street and made homeless, all he could do is say, "Fuck you!" So I'm glad you came to the consideration, you fat, bald motherfucker, to make people live in L.A. Stop this antagonizing attack on the renters. Most of the renters are wetbacks like you, you bat, fat, bald motherfucker. So that's the reason why I'm here in protest, because yes, I'm a little upset, but only because we're adopting a tenant harassment ordinance. And I want to thank the city attorney, Mike Fuer. Fuck you too.
Now you have one minute of public comment.
Well, it's a genocide, right? That's what they called it? But yet the goat man left with his fat-ass bitch wife somewhere, who knows where, celebrating. But the Holocaust is here in L.A. Homelessness, Americans in the street dying every day. 22 veterans die a year from suicide, because they have to live in their fucked-up garages and their cars, because of tendency. Where are the jobs, Mayor Eric Garcetti? Where the fuck the jobs? Because I'm looking for a job, nigger. I'm a working-class, white-collar nigger, and I want a job. I'm sick and tired of not being able to rent in L.A. off of Broadway, fat, bald fuck. And where's that fucking goat with that fat-ass bitch wife of his? And I'm not gonna talk about the other bitches of L.A., because I got it coming too. So fuck you. 42 U.S.C., 1983, Cohen versus...
Your time's up, Mr. Spindler, thank you. Mr. Spindler, your time is up. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Herman. Mr. Spindler, your time is now on. You have items number 1, 9, 10, 11, and 12, and you have two minutes for those. Please start his time.
Thank you very much, you big, fat prick, Peppa Pig Coretts. Now, we get to lanes. CD6, 1N. N stands for, what does N stand for? Jobri Ali says it stands for "nigger." 1N, CD6, but no one to lean, cancel the lean. Now we get to other shit in the budget. By the way, we have item number 12. Oh, boy. Number 12, Weeza and Hettus Dawson, the feasibility of adopting a tenant harassment ordinance. Listen, rookie, listen, rookie. To quote... To quote the great Zuma Dog, "You cannot have the feasibility of adopting something, jackass. Either you adopt it, or you don't adopt it. Either you perjure yourself, or you don't perjure yourself. Either you're a racist like Joe Bray Ali, or you're not. So you've got to decide whether to adopt it? Fuck feasibility. Feasibility is bullshit. You can adopt it or not adopt it. Don't use the word feasibility, because feasibility means you're going to go to Del Richardson and Associates to see how many more people could be thrown out of their fucking rent-controlled apartments. That's the feasibility. No more! No more throwing people out of rent-controlled apartments. No more. Moratorium." Now, we get back to the resolution of the REAP. Yes, the REAP under FBI investigations since 1999. Take these people off. Thank you for CD5. Thank you, CD8. They have complied. Have they complied? Yes, because they paid off the building inspector? Check. They have paid off the councilman? Check. They have given to the furniture fund for the councilmen? Yes, check. They have been maliciously harassed as owners of property? Check. So now, finally, they get their property back. But what I would insist is, is that every property owner who's been on REAP, contact the FBI, file a claim for what you call—what did the city attorney call it in that memo?
An unjustified taking.
Oh, an unjustified taking, yes.
Mr. Spindler, you have one minute of public comment, but before you start, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Herman has been jumping up and down in his seat, making wild gestures and distracting myself and others. What recourse do we have in this case?
So I've noticed that, too. It's not just a single fleeting gesture. He's been doing it continuously in an attempt to obviously distract us. I recommend you give him one more warning. If he does it again, we—you eject him from the meeting.
And, Mr. Herman, you have been warned on that subject again as well. Mr. Spindler, you have one minute for public comment.
Well, they started it. Anyway, CD1, vote Gil Sadio. He's never thrown me out of a meeting. He's never denied me public comment in all of his committee meetings. What does that show? Two things. One, he doesn't like the city getting sued, and two, he believes in free speech. Now, you look at this Joe Bray Ali. Mitch O'Farrell endorsed a man who's against the LGBT community. The L.A. Times did the same thing. A year ago, you knew he was giving racist comments. Some of us out here got that information out there. So, yes, Joe Bray Ali—and I can say this with absolute certainty—Joe Bray Ali is a white nigger. Vote no on Ali and yes on Sadio.
The next speaker is Lydia Ponse on items 1, 9, 10, 11, 12, 15, and 16. You'll have three minutes, and then a minute for public comment.
Thank you for having me. Lydia Ponse, Venice, AIM, American India Movement, SoCal. I'm actually going to take two minutes of your time. We need to be reminded that we're all related, and these agenda items are all related and relatable and connected to the budgets that are about to be decided on by all of you good people. And I hope that you're paying attention, because the fact is, is that I came across town, I car-pooled, and I used the little bit of money that I have, as I'm disabled for six months on medical leave, working from L.A. USD. I'm one of your constituents, and I do vote. The power of money is really important, as much as it is important to the power of voting. And we're asking that you divest, Mr. Mitchell Farrell and Mr. Bonin, if you could please make sure that this item is agendized on the Budget Committee, or it's waived, because we have about a week left to make sure that you all decide to divest the $8 billion that is basically cause for concern for social justice issues from the west side, east, north, and south of Los Angeles. We need you to get real about the people that vote for you and that you work for. Mr. Mitchell Farrell—
Mr. President, the speaker is not discussing—
—the one through 20 items on the agenda that she had cards in for. —to do with the right things that you guys have to do. You're hired to work for us. You cannot forget that you work for us. Those budget items and those lined items cannot be cut for homeless, cannot be cut for a sanctuary city that we will be. We need the resources for the people.
I think you're—
So I thank you for your time, but I do need to make sure that Mr. O'Farrell—I'm really concerned about the motion. We still have people in jail at Standing Rock. We need each other, so can you please do your job and get off your phone?
Excuse me, you're still off-topic.
—and make plans to divest. That's what we're asking. And at this point, we'll be here next week—
We'll begin your general public comment for a minute, because you were completely off-topic the whole time, but—
I'm very off-topic, and I plan to be, because you guys have to bring it back to the real power of the people. Bring it back to the people that are here, who spend their time before you, trying to connect to you, on a human level. You need clean drinking water. You need clean air and a place to rest your head. There's three different garbage dumps in Santa Monica that were for the city of Beverly Hills that are causing people to be sick in the Pico Neighborhood Youth Area, the Pico Neighborhood Association area, right there by the train. So let's be real, and let's be honest, and actually put the divest motion on the agenda so you can vote on it and decide to move the money. Seriously, it's all connected, and I don't know who or where you're going to get your water from when it's all $30 a case of water. I know I can't afford that. So can we be real about putting this divest motion, waive it from the Budget Committee, and put it on the agenda for next Tuesday? Please. Please. Waive it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we're going to now take votes on items 9, 10, and 11. If you would please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
Consider item 1J from April 26th Agenda and continue it for 30 days.
Mr. President, just for clarification, 1J is Council File Number 17-0160-S179, and there needs to be a vote to reconsider first, sir.
Okay, so let's vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And so, that now will be continued without objection to May 26, I believe. Mr. Bloomingfield, does that work?
That works. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue 1J on today's agenda to also May 26, sir.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered. Mr. Bonin, did you—let's—we should do Special 1?
City Attorney, you going to make the findings?
Yes.
This is Rule 23.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. This morning, President Trump signed the America First Offshore Energy Executive Order, which opens the Pacific Atlantic and ocean—Arctic oceans up to oil and gas drilling. The executive order threatens our local beaches, harbors, and waterways, and it is critical that the city of Los Angeles immediately make known its opposition to this executive order in an effort to protect the health and welfare of its residents. Two votes are required, first on the findings pursuant to Government Code 54954.2.
Okay, let's have the vote on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Bonin, we do have some cards on this item, but I make you—you can make the call.
Thank you. I'll speak first.
Go ahead.
Thank you, colleagues. I brought forward this Rule 23 motion this morning, because as you just heard, President Trump today is issuing an executive order that would open up the coast of California, the Pacific Ocean, the Atlantic Ocean, and the Arctic Ocean to oil drilling again. This president is—let's make no mistake about it, he is launching war against the state of California and the people of California and of Los Angeles. Whether it is labor standards, whether it is civil rights, whether it is civil liberties, whether it's immigration, whether it's privacy, whether it's business standards, or whether it is the environment, this president stands squarely against and in favor of assaulting the values that we hold dear. The city of Los Angeles has been a leader in promoting renewable energy and has been a leader in preventing oil drilling off our coast for decades. The modern environmental movement was born in California after a devastating spill in 1969, and it was members of this city council, Zav Yaroslavsky, and my predecessor, the environmental champion who represented the 11th District, Marvin Browdy, who led Los Angeles in passing Proposition O in 1988, which said no more oil drilling off the coast of Los Angeles. The president's executive order today, he dubs the America First Offshore Oil Energy Executive Order. I would dub it the Environment Last Executive Order. And just as this president and this administration had its spokesperson come out and say horribly offensive things about Jews and genocide and the Holocaust, the week of Jewish holidays, they chose the week of Earth Day in order to launch this assault on our environment. And it's vitally important that the city of Los Angeles join Governor Brown, who joined with governors up and down this coast last night, and with Senator Feinstein and others in saying, "We are going to take every step possible to oppose this." So this motion would make it an official, immediate, urgent part of our legislative agenda to oppose this executive action. It needs to go through a lot of steps and hearings over the next two years to be effectuated. We want to stand up and say, "Hell, no. Hands off our coast. We're about renewable energy here, and that's the avenue we want to be going down." Ask for an aye vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bonin. So I'd like to call up Mr. Hunt, Mr. Spindler, and Mr. Walsh. Mr. Previn. You hear your name? Please come forward if you want to speak. Mr. Herman? Yes?
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. For the record, a Rule 23 motion cannot be made until the facts known comprising the motion were not known after the agenda was posted. You're violating the city charter. Your motion is what we call—what is it?
Ultraviris.
Ultraviris, yes, it's ultraviris. Please see the special memorandum that Mr. Fable knows about that the puppet read. Finally, what do we say about oil prices? Drill, baby, drill. Yes. We're going to drill, drill, drill for more oil, 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 and there's nothing you can do about it. Fuck you, Bonin. Lower gas prices for more puppets to drive cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Herman, Mr. Previn.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Mr. Trump, you will not destroy our beaches. You will not—every right-wing Republican is on our side if they live near the ocean. How dare you, you scumbag president, to destroy our neighborhood with oil drilling? Who the—who the fuck do you think you are, you scumbag president? Millions, and we're going to have a swim in. You know what a swim in? Once you try to put in oil derricks in our coastline, we will swim out there, and we may die. We may die, but we will die for the environment, you scumbag president of the United States. You will never, never destroy our coastline, because we didn't vote for you, you piece of shit.
Thank you. So if I get Mr. Herman, Mr. Previn, Mr. Hunt, Leah, Mr. Herman, floor is yours.
Does not get any worse. What did Ms. Leah state for the record? Mr. Bonin's impacting our coast with the tall bluff, with no restrictions, causing severe emotional stress and harm to Ms. Leah after she brought out a number of times here and in the public works regarding— And what have you done? Not scratched one portion of your white, creamy ass, Mr. Bonin?
Let's stay on the subject, Mr. Herman.
Because you know why? The paste of your face is all written on that ocean when that hillside comes down. And yes—
Mr. President, the speaker is still off-topic.
Stay on topic, Mr. Herman.
We need oil, so I can pump it. See? I want to pump oil, not so that we can save the environment, so that I can say in just three words or less—let's try, "Fuck you."
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Previn, Mr. Hunt, Leah.
Mr. Wesson, I just have to tell you how appreciative we are that you are standing up boldly with Mr. Bonin here against Mr. Trump. Mr. Wesson is standing up against Mr. Trump, and he's doing so bravely, because it is Herbert J. Wesson who decided to stand up to President Trump on this, along with Mr. Bonin, to point out that our coasts here in California, the coast of Herbert J. Wesson, the guy with the license plate, are actually going to stand up and do something to—I'm not sure what this calls for, I guess, to just—to make a resolution that we want to protect the coast, which, of course, Californians do want to do. It's so exciting that you were able to find an emergency reason to do it in this meeting and then say my name 15 times in a row, along with the other speakers. It's so—it's so thoughtful, sir, and thank you for keeping us small like the kids, but not like the dog and all the other things.
Stay on the subject. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Let's have Mr. Hunt, Mr. Hunt, and then Leah, if you're here, you better make your way towards the podium. Yes, sir.
Just a little caution of the Brown Act. It's a federal crime to interrupt a meeting on either side. Let me say this. Fuck Trump. Trump can come to Venice Beach. Fuck Trump again, and it's just not about the money, it's about the people. No oil spills in Venice Beach.
Leah.
Councilman Bourbon, and I so appreciate you caring about the offshore drilling. Please care about onshore drilling, because it turns out, while I was digging through facts, I learned that the Pacific Palisades Occidental Petroleum Oil Ordinance is still active. Am I wrong? Because I found out it's still alive, and it turns out it's underneath the mobile home park that you're about to cut the whole hillside, and if you can cause a public nuisance, you could rezone it pretty easily, because it's—
Stay on this subject.
I am. It's—you have a Pacific—I hear it is, digging for facts, Los Angeles Times, the Pacific Palisades Oil Field, it's on land on the coast. So while you're talking about offshore, you're not addressing the immediate fact that it's right there on the coast at Will Rogers State Beach, and you're not telling people. You know, it's deceptive. It's deceptive, and you know, probably a little bit of real estate fraud in there, too, people who buy and the geologic problems.
Thank you.
So please uphold the people's—
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Bonin, now we're going to vote on the motion. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Let's recess this meeting, move to the special. If you could call a roll.
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. 13 members present and accor, Mr. President.
Where's Amanda? If you please come forward. Sergeants, could you let—let her through? I'd like to request that she sit at the center table.
Mr. President, just for the record, committee reports for— Mr. President, just for the record, committee reports for items 13 and 14 have been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Ms. Rice, June, good to see you. Please have a seat. And just, we have seats on the side, guys, sit on the... Amanda, are you gonna begin? And it's good to see you, it's been a while.
It's been a while, good to see you, too. Mr. President, members of the council, thank you so much for making a moment to allow us to speak to this statement of unity. My name is Amanda Susskind, I'm the Regional Director of the Anti-Defamation League's Pacific Southwest Region. We're an over 100-year-old human rights, human, civil rights and human relations organization, and we take great pride in having the opportunity to bring communities together. Given the anniversary of Saigu, which will be tomorrow, we started a process about six months ago, hi, Deirdre, to bring leaders of the African-American, Korean-American community together, along with members of law enforcement. Now the number-one nongovernmental agency training law enforcement in hate crimes and extremism, the ADL was in a unique position to bring these civil rights groups together with the leaders of the law enforcement. Really, really proud of the fact that four authors came up with this statement of unity that I know you're gonna speak to when you do the resolution, and a total of 22 organizations, including five, hi, Bob, sorry, I didn't even see you, five organizations from the law enforcement community have signed on to this statement of unity. I, with your permission, we'd like to read just the pledge that, that follows the, a series of recitals that...
Go right ahead.
The recitals go to the facts that led to the terrible breakdown of our communities in April 29th and the days following, and we have created a pledge that we are asking all of you to join. There are 10 items to the pledge, we'd love to each read one if you, if we may.
Please.
Or two, yeah. So, "We recognize the tragedy of April 29th, 1992, and honor those innocent victims who lost their lives as we pay respect to their families." Can I read the next one? "We recognize those who lost their property and livelihoods, honoring their efforts to rebuild and regenerate."
"We recognize the work our respective civic organizations have done to rebuild and heal our community in the last 25 years."
And I should have, we're at four, I should have introduced...
Why don't we do it at the end? I was thinking that, at the end we'll introduce everyone.
"We recognize the work of the city of Los Angeles and LAPD to educate, reform, and hold accountable their workforce, to work collaboratively with civic organizations, and to implement community policing strategies, all to the betterment and reduction of crimes in Los Angeles."
"We recognize the growing socioeconomic disparity in our country continues to contribute to the polarization of our communities."
"We will continue to work together to create a harmonious community, recognizing that, like the nation, we are a community of immigrants welcoming to all, and we are a community of the dispossessed who did not come here as immigrants, including my community, the African-American community."
"We will stand up to the bigots, the haters, and the xenophobes in our community."
"We will denounce hate crimes of all kinds because a hate crime targeting one segment of our community does harm to all of us."
"We, the community, and law enforcement, will work together with mutual respect and accountability to continue to promote the high standards of community policing, including reporting and assisting in the fight against hate and extremism." And the last one is 10.
"And finally, we pledge that our children will understand that the diversity in our community and on our campuses is a strength and a source of pride, not a cause for hatred, division, or exclusion."
This is the pledge we ask you to join us in, and we are so proud to represent 22 organizations representing the very diverse community, the most diverse major city in the history of this country, Los Angeles.
Well, thank you all, but I think that it's so important that we introduce to the rest of Los Angeles, some of you don't need introductions, but why don't we just introduce all that are at the table today? And again, thank you for your good work. I know how challenging it is to get 22 people to agree and to sign a statement. So, kudos to you, Amanda, on that. But let's, who do we have with us today?
Well, Carol Goldstein has, has joined us here from our New York office, our national headquarters of the ADL. You all know Connie Rice, who probably singularly did, did so much in the...
Yes, she did.
...in the wake of the riots to bring, and the uprising to bring communities together and, and work with police in specific to create reform. June Bang is the president of the Korean-American Coalition, the preeminent organization representing the Korean-American community, and he's been very busy as well. And Chief Arcos is representing all of the law enforcement communities that came together to make this statement possible, because there is such polarization, not just among our communities, but between the communities oftentimes and the police. The work is not done. There's a tremendous amount of work to do, but we're standing here pledging to work together, and we appreciate your support for that effort.
Well, again, thank you for all of your work. Now let's make this official. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
That's approved unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
And we can also vote on item 13. So on item 13, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Mr. President, items 15 through 16 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. If I could see the comment cards on these items. Okay, so if I could have Ms. Minor, Lydia Ponse, please come forward, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Previn, Mr. Herman, Mr. Spindler, Mr. Hunt.
Now listen, ever since Weezer and Corretts decided to ascertain the jurisdiction over the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners, the auction in April 18, 2017 for the property located at West Angelino View Drive, yeah, rookies, yeah, rookies. It's really crystal clear and pasty white, abused its discretion by issuing Building Permit Number 141010100003Z0596. But that's not fucking important, rookie. It's not important, rookie. Not by revoking the permits that expired prior to the date of insurance on December 14, 2016. Don't you get it, rookie? Don't you get it? Stick to the topic.
Well, I'm trying, I'm really trying, but as Steve Sobra for the LAPD Police Commission had mentioned, the project located at 10101 West Angelino View Drive in Council District 5, board file number 170010, there was none submitted.
No fucking community, what? No fucking community impact statement? How dare you? How dare you? You do this matter over and over repeatedly. Assertion of jurisdiction is out of control. I got something to say to you, plum.
Okay, Mr. Herman, what we're gonna do, give him a minute for 16. Go ahead, Mr. Herman.
Pardon me?
16, that was 15.
Numero 17, 16? All right. Relative to asserting this motion under safety, under the Department of LADBS, not to mention the old, former president of that building and safety who got caught in sexual harassment, but that's not, that's irrelevant to this subject. You know, date rape is another issue relative to the physical year for the 2017, 2018 enforcement assistance. We shouldn't allow them any grant anywhere in the state of California because the city of Los Angeles runs a racketeering scheme scam, and we speak about them every time. They're called L-I-E-N, not lean on me, but lean against the people who you take action against. I am dead.
Thank you, Mr. Herman, thank you, Mr. Walsh. We'll give him 15 and 16 as well. Go ahead.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, and tweeting at Hollywood Dems, and for identification purposes only, Chairman of the No Oil Derricks on California Coast. This, the 15 says, "This is a complicated issue. What happened is the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners are being slapped down because they erred its discretion by issuing a building permit." This, remember, in LA, all you have to do to get a building permit is give money to the mayor for his run for governor. And this issue is very important, and we're 100% in favor. Number 16 is, concerns recycling and recovery. This is, authorizes to expend said funds from the countless purposes set forth in this report and consistent with grant requirements. This thing was, this is $63,000. $63,000 here, $63,000 there, it begins to add up, and I don't need the full amount of money, and we're not gonna have any oil derricks on the California coast.
Lydia Ponse, Venice.
One second, let's give her, her time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Lydia Ponse, Venice. More affordable housing, yes, the fact that we could actually stop displacing people today, and somewhere within the next four to six years, we would actually have the housing that we once had for very low, extremely low, and moderate incomes. I don't know any teachers, or firefighters, police, or even pharmaceutical technicians who can afford to pay their rent on the job that they have now and the income that they have now. There's a lot of people working full-time and part-time, and I don't know about you, but if someone's driving the ambulance to get me to the hospital, I hope that they've had enough rest and sleep. I know some of you are preoccupied on your cellphones and your computers, but I would ask that you, out of respect to me and all my ancestors who actually survived theirs, for me to stand before you to share these words, to look at me once, and to look at me once and to say to me that you're gonna do something for the homeless, for the women who are birthing babies on the streets, for the veterans who return to not getting the assistance and support they need immediately from the VA, for the people who are put out because they don't know their rights, for the undocumented folk who do not know their rights as a human being. I thank you for looking at me, for the few of you who did, because a commitment is here, breath to breath, heart to heart, and eyes to eyes, which are the windows of our souls. I don't come here to interrupt, I come here to share some kindness, as simple as that. I can be angry, I can be upset, and I can be off-topic, but I can bring it back real to who your aunties and your grandmothers are, the matriarchs in your family. What do you tell them at the end of the day? Do you tell them that you did your best for the people, the city of Los Angeles? I'm not trying to make you feel guilty, I'm trying to make it, bring it real, because I know that you love people, and I know that you love your family and your community. You just need to bring it back to that.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Again, overbuilding and no affordable housing or homes. I totally agree in that area not to overbuild and not to congest that area because it's already congested, and if we keep on building and nothing's affordable, then we all lose. That's what's wrong with Los Angeles, California.
Next speaker.
Yes, so now we have the CD5, and you know who that is? Peppa Pete, Polkowitz, yes, and he's doing the bad things again. Interfering with building permits. 66% voted no on Measure S, you fat fucking slob. Don't you understand? It's build, baby, build, that's what the voter said, and here you are, the permits for this poor gentleman on 10101 West Angelo View Drive, going up in the mountains where the sun rises, where there are only white people. Oh, I'm sorry, that's Joe Bray Ali, he, he texted me that, okay, delete that.
Stay on the subject, Mr. Spindler.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, stay on the subject.
Okay. So, you want to 245 a, a building and safety permit decision? The last time that happened was 1999. That's the last time that the 245 motion has been brought to this floor by Building and Safety. Yes, 1999, this is unprecedented. I'm against this fucking bullshit. Now the permits, they said they are going to expire in December, so if they expired, you can't revoke them, stupid. That's why it's build, baby, build. Let the building permits be issued, let them fucking build, 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 as Gil Sadio says, "We need more housing." Yes, and I agree with that. And finally, as you may not know, Joe Bray Ali had something to say.
Thank you, cut his time, thank you, Mr. Spindler. Cut his time. If I could have the next speaker, please come forward. Ms. Minor, please come forward. Mr. Previn, if you're gonna speak on this item, you should make your way to the center aisle. Yes, ma'am.
We're still on item 15, yes.
One minute, she's on one item.
We're here to, we're here to support Councilman Corretts on this, on his motion, and ask that you approve of it today. We want to thank him for his leadership. The Benedict Canyon Association, the Beller Beverly Corretts Neighborhood Council, which we represent, have grave concerns about this project, which would be the biggest hillside structure ever in LA, certainly in Benedict Canyon, and would compromise the hillsides forever. The process was not followed, and these current permits were clearly issued in error. On behalf of the thousands and thousands of residents we represent, please pass this motion and make this right. This so-called house is, is the exact reason the council passed new regulations on homes over 17,000 square feet, and this is a 67,000-square-foot structure with 31,000 square foot of decks. It is using the loopholes to get around the rules, and we thank Councilman Corretts again for saving the hillsides, which this...
Thank you. So as I get Mr. Previn to come forward, I want to indicate that we're gonna delay our hands-around City Hall for about 15 minutes till we end, so it will be upon the journey of council. Mr. Previn?
Thank you, Council President Wesson, and thank you to Ms. Minor for those deeply moving words. I would say the Hillside Federation and the energy on this is applied appropriately by Mr. Corretts, and we thank him for intervening. Obviously, building and safety does err on a regular basis, and we know that in this hall. Shifting to item 16, I would say, you know, I would hope that the Hillside Federation would join Angelinos and people in Studio City in resisting what's coming down the pike very soon from Mayor Garcetti and Krikorian, which is the Harvard-Westlake parking garage. That's 94,000-square-feet structure, not 7,000-square-foot structure. So, we really need help to not allow a giant parking structure in the hillside. The Hillside Federation has been vocal about it, and I really would appreciate it. And Aaron Green from our neighborhood, is a lobbyist who's trying to put a big 300 condominiums on our tennis courts, which is an outrage beyond belief, so I would ask that all of us, together at this council, Mr. Buscaino included with a little broken hand, step forward and don't let this happen. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Leah? Leah?
Hi, my name is Leah. Please let the record show that the administrative record for the board file 170010, council file 170348S1, omitted the testimony and the transcript of March 21, 2017. Somebody put in the 2016 twice. It's very harmful, because 2017, you had material testimony, plus you had the expediter, Ms. Penny Flynn, stand before. And that's where your pattern and practice is. And we all need to know what's really happening. It's that truth and illumination thing. So, please, if you could correct your board file, collect the public record online, and make sure you have the correct transcript in there, because you've omitted it, and then people won't be able to get to court and have a fair administrative record. It denies them due process, and that's the problem you need to fix in the city. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corretts, did you want to say something or just call for the vote?
Yes, thank you. For the record, today, council has an opportunity to assert jurisdiction on the Board of Building and Safety Commission's action regarding building permits on 10101 Angelo Drive. My office has received a tremendous number of complaints and comments regarding the project. Among the objections include the seemingly commercial nature of the project, which includes over 60,000 square feet in size for a single-family home, includes multiple event-sized rooms, commercial-oriented multiple urinals. I believe there is a bathroom that includes 24 urinals in one bathroom that is not a single-family home. That exceeds what we even see in LAX and Dodger Stadium restrooms. There is the potential destruction of a wildlife corridor and over 30,000 square feet of outdoor deck space, clearly meant for hosting large numbers of people. Many in the community fear this will become a party house of massive proportions. I certainly join them in that fear and would not be consistent with a single-family zone. While the city departments in conjunction with LAPD are making great strides in the enforcement of party houses and other nuisance locations and single-family homes, it is important to review all the building permits of this nature. The city has also recently passed the Bel Air overlay, which requires all new homes over 17,500 square feet to go through a site plan review to ensure consistency with the single-family zone. I remain concerned about the enormous size of this project and the commercial nature of the building, and I ask for your support in asserting a Section 245 council jurisdiction on this matter.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, Madam Clerk, why don't we adjourn this special, return to the regular?
Mr. President, what is before council is one and 12 from the regular meeting, sir?
What do we have on one? Is there a card on item one?
Yes, Mr. President, there are.
Robert Seligman, please come forward.
Thank you, Robert Seligman. And I am an attorney, and I'm representing the estate of Stephen Knight. The item I am speaking on is the request to put a lien on 12816 Short Avenue. Mr. Knight passed away shortly after the first order, and the administrator was unaware of the violation or any of the fees until the lender sent to them the notice of this hearing. And I request, I've been in contact with Mr. Hoff, and I've requested that no lien be placed on the property. That we're in the process of removing the inoperable vehicles, and we have paid the fees, but not the late fees or the surcharges, and I would request that those be waived. And we anticipate that the violation will be corrected.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. On this item, let's, Madam Clerk, prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
So, that brings us where?
That brings council to item number 12.
Okay, let's pull that up and give me the speakers. Gianna Martin, Yimelda Alvarez, Fernando Gaetan, Jennifer Ganata, Elizabeth Blaney, please come forward. Luisa Mange, Enrique Velasquez, please, please come forward. Please, please. Stephen Bowers. Yes, sir. Please.
Fernando Gaetan with the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. I'm an attorney who represents tenants often, and as an attorney who represents tenants, I see the harassment that tenants often face by some landlords. Harassment can be subtle, like frequent notices to enter without justification, to avert, like threats of violence. Most fall somewhere in between. Now, state law provides some protections, but it doesn't go far enough because it doesn't provide a private right of enforcing because it lacks attorney's fees. When ordinances pass anti-harassment ordinances, when cities pass anti-harassment ordinances, it goes a long way to allowing advocates to work with the city to deter threats of harassment. We've seen this in the city of Santa Monica, where we've been able to save over 100 units of affordable housing for low-income tenants. Thank you for your consideration. I've also submitted some written comments.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Jennifer Ganata, attorney at Inner City Law Center. As a tenant's rights attorney at Inner City Law Center and a member of the Los Angeles Tenants Union, I'm in support of the city council adopting an ordinance that protects tenants from harassment of landlords. My colleagues in the eviction defense bar and I have defended numerous evictions where the premise of the evictions have been based on unwarranted harassment by the landlord. It is in my experience that landlords have been able to manipulate HSL rules and procedures to convince tenants to move out. Other times landlords overtly, sorry, demand that tenants move out. Constant visits from the landlord with tenants, with threats of eviction often result in tenant pushout. By the time I see many of these tenants, they are already discouraged and weary of any further interaction with their landlord. Currently, there is no legal recourse for tenants who are experiencing harassment in this manner. Many tenants who live in extremely below-market rental units in rapidly gentrifying neighborhoods are prime targets of landlords. Our city needs to ensure that tenants have a legal recourse to address harassment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello. Sorry. My name is Elizabeth Blaney. I work with Unión de Vecinos. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Weisar for bringing this forward, this motion forward. It is something that we see every day, where we have tenants coming into our office with either illegal lockouts, or landlords will fail to make repairs, to make the unit uncomfortable for tenants to live in so that they move out, or they will constantly, on a regular basis, serve notice to try and enter the property for no reason. We also have landlords who will just show up on the property and make threats, either to call immigration or saying, "You need to be out by X date because I want the unit." So, it is definitely a way that landlords are using to try and make tenants feel uncomfortable in their home. Harassing tenants is a tool that we're seeing landlords use to avoid rent control and as a way to really displace tenants. So, given the housing crisis and given the majority of the population of Los Angeles are tenants, we do see that this anti-harassment ordinance is desperately needed in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gianna Martin. I live in District Four, I'm a resident of Los Angeles and a member of the tenants union. I'm currently under an Ellis eviction by Wise and Residential. My landlord has done multiple things to threaten me, including phone calls, including spreading glass on my driveway so that I could not park my car. He has left the units in my building unlocked without doorknobs so that drug addicts and crackheads lived below me and next to me. I have been threatened on multiple occasions. I've had a slap lawsuit levied against me. I've had phone calls come at me every day, in morning and night. I've had trash never removed for four months. I have lived in fear. There are no lights outside of my building. There are cars that drive by my house at night. This is just one developer. I know that he's done this to several other tenants that he's had. One woman, at 65, had a nervous breakdown and moved out.
Thank you. Thank you. If I could have the next speaker? Identify yourself.
Enrique Velasquez within Quirinos Unidos. We appreciate Councilman Weisar's initiative on the anti-harassment ordinance, because our organization on weekly basis helps tenants from all over the city with this type of issues. It is, it has become very common to hear tenants complaining about having new landlords in their buildings, coming with faulty notices, illegal rent increases, all kinds of made-up excuses to evict tenants. Harassment is basically what they are utilizing right now in order to avoid rent control protections, and we believe that this is very necessary, so we appreciate the consideration to looking into existing ordinances in cities like Santa Monica, San Francisco, et cetera. Thank you very much, and we hope that you approve this ordinance with no problem.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Yimelda Álvarez, y soy una residente de Boyle Heights, y estoy pidiendo al Consejo de la Ciudad también que nos apoye con la ordenanza que queremos pagar porque ya... Oh, okay, okay. Okay, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Yimelda Álvarez.
Gracias, no, my name is Yimelda Álvarez.
Y soy residente de Boyle Heights.
I am a resident of Boyle Heights.
Y estoy pidiendo al consejo de la ciudad que nos, nos ayude a pagar esta ordenanza porque estamos cansados de los dueños de casas.
We are asking the city council to please enact this ordinance because we're really tired of the landlords.
De que todo el tiempo seamos acosados.
That we're always, all the time, we're being harassed.
Y este, queremos por eso como una protección, porque para ellos no cuenta si nosotros les pagamos la renta y ellos siguen acosándonos.
Because for, we're looking for some kind of protection because they do not even care if we're paying the rent.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Sylvie Shane, and I'm a member of the LA Tenants Union and a recent candidate for city council in District 13. Before that, I was just living my life in Hollywood until landlord harassment turned me into a housing rights advocate. I've seen firsthand the unscrupulous tactics that landlords and developers will resort to in order to get a tenant to relinquish their rent-controlled apartment. From pretending not to receive rent, illegal apartment entries, withholding spare keys, and bogus eviction attempts, all these are behaviors designed to frustrate and intimidate tenants. I watched one by one as my neighbors were picked off in waves of harassment. Myself, I had to defend no less than three eviction attempts, which were costly. This motion cannot come soon enough, and I applaud Councilmember Weisar's lead on this. I spoke about it during my campaign, and I will leave you with an email response I received from a scrupulous landlord that states, quote, "As a landlord and human being, I am appalled at what some landlords and developers will do for a buck. I think they should bring back."
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is, hello, my name is Stephen Bowers, and I'm a resident of CD1, and I'm in the process of being Ellis Act evicted from an apartment I've been at 10 years. And I can corroborate a lot of what the other Ellis Act resident has gone through. Additionally, what they've done in our place is cut down all the trees suddenly, make it very difficult to pay rent, not deposit the rent check for several months, then do so suddenly to presumably make it so that we couldn't cover the fee, and then we'd, there'd be a reason to evict us. Cut off utilities, including electricity and water, cut down all the trees that have grown back again, put up super-bright lights, just to make our lives unlivable there. And so, I speak in strong support of this motion, and I salute you for having brought it up, Congress, Councilman Weisar. Thank you very much.
Next.
Hi, my name is Ann Harz. I am a landlord, and I support an anti-harassment ordinance. I am here on behalf of four, three senior citizens. Maria Todd, 84, who lives on the 400 block of Coronado Street, who is harassed. Natalie Moore, 89 years old, on the 600 block of Coronado Street, harassed. Galina Kolschinsky, 90, of the 800 block of Coronado Street, harassed. I have had to work hard to help these renters keep their rent-stabilized apartments. They would have been made homeless had community members not added, aided them. But we need more tools, so please help us and create a anti-harassment ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt?
I'm done.
Mr. Weisar?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, our apologies to the public speakers who came today. This item was on the agenda at our last council meeting, but due to some technical issues, it was, the chair of this meeting at the time wasn't aware that there were public speakers. This item came before us as an idea to have Los Angeles follow what other cities have done to protect the rights of tenants. I was having a discussion with some individuals from Boyle Heights about gentrification and the tremendous pressure that that community faces with higher property values and increased rents. And I responded to them, well, you know, there's not going to be gentrification in Boyle Heights because of the people who live in Boyle Heights, over 75% of them are renters, and of those, 88% are protected by rent control. And so, with that, we thought that if we protect those individuals through rent control and the rights that come with that, we're not going to see the massive displacement that we've seen in some communities. And they brought to my attention that irrespective of that, there are many landlords who are trying to go around rent control and harass the tenants to get them out, and the landlords are under tremendous pressure themselves because they know they can get higher rents for those units. The fact is that people are looking at neighborhoods like Boyle Heights to live where in the past they hadn't. But given the high rents throughout the city, they're going to some neighborhoods that have had a stable population for decades, where people have raised their families and continue to do that. And so, we thought that this would be a good way to ensure that we continue to protect those families and the tenants who've been there for a while. It's an additional layer of support for our tenants, and I want to thank Unión de Vecinos and other tenant organizations who are here today. This is just passing the motion. We'll make sure we work with the chair of the Housing Committee to bring it back as soon as possible and have the research done by our CLA, and so that we can move forward with this and draft an ordinance that will support our tenants. It cannot come soon enough because, in fact, we hear of these types of incidents each and every day, and although they are either, we could see when they're direct, there are many subtle attempts to harass our tenants, and that's what we want to get at as well and give them those protections. So, with that, thank you very much, Mr. President, and I ask for your eye vote on this.
Okay. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
What we're going to do is, because we're already 25 minutes late, we're going to recess council. I'm going to ask everybody to please join us outside as we go hands around the City Hall complex. I'll ask all our guests from the Korean community if they would come in and go with me personally, all the other members of the building, if we could go outside. We're going to recess this meeting, be outside for a few minutes, and we would return. Spring Street at this point. Let's start on Spring Street. Let's start on Spring Street. The recess is over. We are returning to the council chambers. Going to wait a moment until I'm certain that I have a quorum, and then we'll begin to wrap things up. Well, let me try to see if Veronica Perez is back or Maria Dominguez Ramirez Galin... Amaris Galindo, please come to the center aisle. Sergeants, I'm calling on the last few general public comments speakers if you could allow them access. Tamara Case or KC, Allison Bob Amano. So please ma'am, come forward and identify yourself. Yes?
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Dominguez and I work at Hotel Irwin in Venice. We're a small family-owned business hotel and provide 125 jobs with health insurance and benefits. We have many long-term employees whom we value like family. As you know, there are more than 1,500 illegal STR units very close to our hotel. Venice is ground zero for short-term rentals and this has significantly hurt our business and ability to grow. Our room rentals have gone down, our revenue is down, and as a result, our share of TLT remitted to the city is down. We fear that jobs may soon be jeopardized because of the continuous of illegal STRs in our neighborhood. As you know, hotels are
Thank you.
At a higher rate.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perez. One minute for all. Amaris Galindo, Tamara, are you here? Okay, I want to defer to Mr. Rue at this time, Mr. David Rue. Okay. Allison, do we have Allison here, Bob Amano? Tamara Case? Allison? Guadalupe Garcia?
Hello, council members. My name is Amaris Galindo and I am a program coordinator at 1736 Family Crisis Center. We are one of the largest agencies in Los Angeles serving the homeless, including domestic violence victims and survivors of human trafficking. Such victims no longer have a home because it's become a place where murder can happen and will occur, so they flee, becoming officially homeless per HUD's definition. However, homeless services by definition do not meet the specialized needs for DV victims nor adhere to best practices in the field by providing safety, confidentiality, and longer-term shelter needs. The need for transitional shelter care is paramount for DV families because when they come to us from shelter, they are beaten, battered, and severely traumatized. We cannot ethically rush them into rapid rehousing in every case, as they would be forced out of emergency shelters and rapidly housed. In some cases, that would lead them to go back to the streets, or worse, back to their batters, to their deaths. FCC is a proud DART provider and we thank you for the expansion of these services. However, knowing that many of our DART clients need long-term shelter, we want to remind you that DART services fall short.
Thank you. Okay, now, this is not the budget hearings. So the general public, the general comment on the council has already been taken. So when the hearing begins, those that are here to speak on the budget will be afforded that opportunity. So right now, I want to turn this over to Mr. Rue. Please, everybody join Mr. Rue.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President, for organizing today's effort and remembrance in our very first hands across City Hall. And I want to thank all the community leaders who's been very patient today in this presentation. And today, we stand shoulder and shoulder to remember to educate and to ensure that the LA riots will never happen again. Councilmember Sadio, Councilmember Marquis Harris-Dawson, I think you're joining us. To ensure that the LA riots will never happen again. However, as the mayor so eloquently advocated earlier this week, remembering is not enough. This past Monday, the mayor, our city council, community and faith leaders signed a declaration of interdependence and a statement of unity. We pledge to continue engaging and advocating on behalf of each other, our fellow Angelenos. This will sometimes mean engaging in uncomfortable but necessary conversations about race, gender, sexuality, and religion. But we must, for the interdependent, for the interdependence in our tapestry is more tightly bound because of our diversity. I was 16 years old when the riots happened. I remember I wasn't scared or angry, but I remember being very confused. I saw mass looting, business owners up in arms, deployment of the National Guards. This was a very dark time in our city's history. It wasn't until after I went to UCLA where I finally learned the full story. It was about history repeating itself, an extension of the 1965 Watts riots. It was about poverty. It was about lack of opportunity, lack of representation, and a lack of voice for millions of Angelenos. Today, 25 years later, our city has made tremendous strides. The increased diversity of our city council, Los Angeles Police Department, and our city government in general finally resemble, and/or we have systems in place to reflect more of the people that we serve. We stand in unity in opposition to all forms of hate, racial discrimination, fat shaming, transphobia, and hate against all minorities and communities. However, we can't rest on our laurels. We must continue to be vigilant, especially now, more important than ever. I am one of two immigrants on the council. I was naturalized when I was turned 18. But I remember 25 years ago what my mother and grandmother told me. They told me, "Don't act up. Don't speak up. Behave." Because you're a guest in this coun, because we are a guest in this country and we might get deported. I stand before you today on behalf of all immigrants to declare, I am not a guest. No one is kicking me out of this country, for this is my country and we are a nation of immigrants. 25 years later, I want to boast our advances in racial equality, but as we've seen of late, our work towards achieving racial equality is far from over. We must seek to understand our differences, to build greater dialogue, and to tackle the broken systems that perpetuate the racial divides in order to move our community forward. I really want to thank my colleagues on the city council. It is an honor to serve with such a distinguished, diversified, courageous, trailblazing, and progressive group of individuals so committed to service and justice. I really want to thank Council President Wesson for your tremendous leadership on this council and for your vision for not only steering the city Embrace L.A. project, but also for your forward-thinking with the creation of the Ad Hoc Committee on Immigration Affairs and Civil Rights. And also for your personal mentorship to me during my tenure at LA County Supervisor Yvonne Burke and now as the first Korean-American on the city council. I also want to recognize my other co-presenter, Councilmember Gil Sadio. Not only is he the first elected official I ever met when I was 20 years old, but he is
You just aged Gilbert.
He is and continues to be a tireless advocate and champion for the voiceless and downtrodden. He rallied against injustice and poverty before they were politically even popular, such as the Dream Act and the License Bill, just to name a few. Now, I want to sing praises for every single one of my colleagues, but in the interest of time, I just want to recognize just one other, and that's Councilmember Marquis Harris-Dawson. Because I am so honored to be have sworn in with my fellow freshmen. While our skin color might be different, we are the same. We come from both serving and advocating on behalf of the community, but more importantly, we are the children of the riots. We rise from its ashes. We have been forged and molded by it. We fight against all injustice and we remember and pledge to work to never let this happen again. So I just want to thank you for today and I want to now turn this over to Councilmember Sadio.
You know what, Mr. Rue, let me just, for a quick moment, just thank all of you, everyone that was here today in City Hall as we joined hands and surrounded this building in a show of unity and also to pay our respects to those who lost their lives 25 years ago. It is very important that we don't forget the past. We should remember it, but we cannot live in the past. And it is time for us as leaders in this city to move Los Angeles forward so that we look towards 25 years from now. And I just can't say enough about the work that all of you have done. Just this week, in my home, I had a dinner for 20 folk, every race, every religion you could imagine, where we had a conversation on race, which is what Embrace L.A. is all about. It's about bringing people together, providing us a platform to talk about our concerns. So with the commitment of members of this council and community leaders, I'm sure we're going to be able to grow that. Mr. Mitch O'Farrell and I had this vision a year or so ago and it really makes us feel proud to see Embrace L.A. grow. Mr. O'Farrell's going to have a small dinner. Mr. Bloomingfield's going to have a small dinner. Mr. Harris-Dawson. So we would hope that we can continue these very special dialogues. So again, I want to thank all of you that have come today, those from the Korean community. It was really such an honor to have you participate with us as we held hands around this great building that represents Los Angeles. I cannot say enough and I will be eternally grateful to you. Mr. Sadio?
Mr. President, I thank you for your leadership on this matter. You will recall that we had just met in 1992. I was a young union leader and you were a young staffer for
I was in elementary school. I was nine.
You'd just arrived from Cleveland. And we were confronted with changes that were not reflective of our highest ideals. We had a city that was not functioning, a police chief that would not speak to the mayor, mayor who would not speak to the police chief. The council was not as reflective of our community as it is today. And that is key because every community deserves a place at the table. Every community needs to have their voice heard. Every community should be treated with the dignity and respect that they deserve. This is a special town. This is a town where everybody comes together throughout the world. There are diasporas that take place for which there are no controls. What we can control is how we receive people who come here. And we should be proud of the statements that we are making today against xenophobia, against transphobia, against racism, against sexism, against all the isms and the ils of our time. We are challenged by Washington. It does not share our vision of America. It is not as inclusive and it does not speak for all Americans. But this city, on this day, with your leadership, is clear that for as many languages that are represented, we speak with one voice. That we see the world from one point of view, that we look forward, that we reflect on our past, the conflicts, the turmoil, but we also look optimistically as a city of immigrants. We look forward to a brighter future, one in which we can all hold hands together, one in which we can all work together, one in which we can all thrive together. Mr. President, that is the significance of this moment and of this time, that we are making that choice. We are making the choice for all of us to be successful, to thrive, to be united, to be one. One city, one vision, and one victory for all. Justice, dignity, and respect for all. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio.
Next, I'd like to call on Councilmember Karen Price of the Great Ninth.
Thank you, Councilmember Rue. Mr. President, colleagues and people of goodwill, it's an honor for me to be with you today as we share our remembrances of 25 years ago. I remember exactly where I was on the corner of Eighth and Bixil. That building is no longer here, but it was the headquarters, the Southern California office for the California Community Economic Development Association. I was a intern in that office at the time. In fact, we were doing a project encouraging nonprofits to expand from just providing social services to engage in housing, housing services, providing retail services, expanding from their social service framework. And, you know, there's a slight hill there, as you recall. So I could look out the window and I would see flames, I'd see the smoke sort of billowing up. But I didn't get word that what had occurred until I got into the car. You know, heading, heading home, I thought. And of course, the streets were clogged with cars, the radio was talking about the fires, the looting, the beating that was, beatings that were occurring. And there was, I was listening at the time to KJLH Radio, 102.3, Marquis. And you may recall at that time, they stopped playing music, Gil, they stopped playing music and it became a talk show.
Yeah.
And people were calling in, just expressing concern, outrage, fear. And I certainly have to admit, for the first, for the first several hours, I was excited. I was very concerned about what was occurring. It was clear that this was in response to a whole range of things that had been occurring over the years, not the least of which was the beating, the Latasha Harland's killing, and then finally, the not guilty plea of the King jury. But as I said, after sometime, the question arose and I was raising it, people on the radio were saying, "When is it going to end? When is this going to end?" And they weren't just talking about the fires, they weren't just talking about the civil disobedience that was occurring, but when were the conditions going to end that caused these problems in the first place? Conditions that fueled the beatings, the economic and health disparities that still exist today in South LA and other parts of the city. 25 years ago, South LA was predominantly African-American. You know, today, it's Afro, it's predominantly Latino, you know, from the Latino diaspora. But there's still areas of disinvestment in South LA, in the Ninth District. I have lots on Avalon, on Broadway, on Central Avenue that are still vacant from the riots. And I know that properties like that exist in District Eight, District One, and in District Ten as well. And so we have to address these issues if we're serious about making real, real changes. Remembering is important so we don't forget and so that we know where we came from. But we can't forget that we know what we must do now and that action has to be paramount. The uprising certainly was an impetus for me to run for office in 93. I ran for city council in Inglewood at that time. And we certainly have benefited from a much more robust, much more honest, much more collaborative conversation between races, between ethnic groups, really understanding how much more we have in common than our difference. We made some important steps to have a police department that protects and respects. And we know we still have some way to go, but we are making progress, I think, on that front too. So as we, as we move forward, obviously, we don't want to forget the past. We honor and have certainly sincere concerns for those who lost property, those who lost their lives, those who became disoriented. But we know we need to do more and we need to do better. So we don't want to forget, as I said, what we've done and we can't forget what we have to do to make our society the kind that will be equal for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Price. Next, that was the new ninth and from the great eighth, Councilmember Marquis Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rue and Council President Wesson and all the members of the body today. Setting aside members of the body today. Setting aside the time to remember one of the most important events and pivotal events in the history of the city of Los Angeles. Back in 1992, even though I was born and raised as an Angelino, I was actually not in Los Angeles. I was in my dorm room in Atlanta, preparing to write final papers and to take your end-of-semester exams. We're kind of watching the news with one eye and studying with another eye. And once we saw the first fire go up, my roommate and I would call someone down the hall, and we'd say, "Hey, David, come down here. Your block just went up." And we'd call another friend and say, "Hey, you know, the supermarket by your house just went up." And by the end of it, there were about 50 of us on the fourth floor of Graves Hall at Morehouse College, all from Los Angeles, all watching our city and our neighborhoods burn. One of the telling things about that situation that I shall never forget is that Morehouse College is a historically African-American college of boys and men in Atlanta. There was not a single one of us that was surprised. Not a single one of us. In fact, most of us felt like it would be more deeper and more damaging than it was. And so all of us were really formed by that event, and we chose various vocations to help heal the city and build the city and kind of create the kind of environment where something like the civil unrest would never happen again. We have seen a renaissance of community engagement, of civic engagement, of community organizing, of faith organizing, of multicultural building that started out. I remember, I used to think it was funny. They wanted you to go places and eat kimchi or eat Mexican food, and other people would try soul food. Well, what turned out as a symbolic thing has turned into a city where there can be multicultural conversations on a regular basis, and there are spaces to have the arguments, to have the disagreements, and to work through them, to come to an end that works for everybody. And so here today, we stand 25 years later. I think our city has a long, long way to go, but we're nowhere near where we were back in 1992. One of the things I'm proud of, Councilmember Buscayeno, nobody else in the world can make this claim. I was sworn into L.A. City Council with the first Korean-American member of the City Council. A child of South L.A., a child of-
We've got to give you a round of applause on that. That's powerful.
And as Councilmember Rue said, both really children of the riots, shaped in the riots, all of our politics and all of our community involvement is really centered around that one event. In fact, we met years and years ago, working on a community issue somewhat connected to the civil unrest. And so we're very grateful to be a part of this body, but very grateful to be a part of this city. It's always important for us to remember, this is the city of angels. We have incredible, awe-inspiring, just amazing and stunning capacity for beauty, but we also, on the other side, have stunning and devastating capacity for evil when we don't have the conversations and we don't have the systems to work through our differences. And so we've built those systems. It takes a lot to build them. They don't just happen. We have to build them, and we have to maintain them. I believe we're on the road to do that. And I believe we will, in our lifetime, see the true city of angels that we all have the potential to be.
Thank you. Thank you, Marquise. And we have a few community leaders joining us today, and I'd like to first call on Laura John. She's the Executive Director of the Korean American Federation of Los Angeles.
Good afternoon. First, I want to thank Council President Wesson and Councilwoman Rue and Councilwoman Sedill for inviting me to speak on behalf of the Korean-American community. 25 years ago, our beloved Koreatown was in chaos, its buildings charged, and the community in ruins. According to 1993 L.A. Times article, more than 2,000 Korean-American businesses were destroyed with a loss of $400 million, more than half the riot's economic toll. The 4/29 civil unrest is remembered as the greatest injury and tragedy to the Korean-American community in the history of Korean immigration. Now, a generation has passed. As a person representing the Korean-American community, I can say that we do not think about the past, what happened in the past, but we should not forget what has happened. As Pastor Boyd of the First AME Church of Los Angeles said, "The past matters." The past matters because we have lessons to learn. The past matters because there are issues to work on. Standing against perpetuating racism and other discriminatory practices, we, all of us here today, have to work together to remove systemic barriers and to enhance the sensitivity in accepting our differences and willing to commit ourselves to open communication with one another. For genuine reconciliation and harmony in our multi-ethnic community, all of us must work together to bring changes in how we perceive each community and to create opportunities that result in practical and positive experiences. For that, I want to inform you that the First AME Church of Los Angeles and the Korean-American Federation have become partners to practice collaboration and cooperation. We will be co-hosting the 4/29 commemorative ceremony at the First AME Church tomorrow. Please come and join us for the first occasion where two important representative organizations work together. And both of us are eager to pursue this unprecedented collaboration long past April 29. Thank you so much.
And Mr. Rue, I do want to mention that we have William Kim from the L.A. Riots Memorial Foundation and people here. Where are you? Let's give him a round of applause. Where's William? Did he leave already? No. Well, anyway, thank you for all that you've done.
Next, I'd like to call on Marco Pacheco of the Casa de Cultura Maya.
Thank you. Good morning and good afternoon. I'm sorry. Mr. President, Wesson, and councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak. As an Angelino 25 years ago, as an Angelino now, a proud Angelino, I lived through the riots. And I was just living down the street, about 10 minutes away, on Hoover, between Beverly and Temple. I also worked in downtown. At the time, I was working for a parking company that managed the majority of the parking structures that serve the high-rise buildings in downtown L.A. And so I was entrusted by the company then to come out with a plan of action along with security and property management to evacuate the buildings as, you know, the day came of the verdict. We weren't sure whether or not what the outcome was going to be, but we wanted to prepare ahead of time and make sure that there would be no one left in danger in those properties. So our plan was to evacuate all of our tenants and employees and staff members and make sure that they all got home safe. So the day off, you know, we were waiting the verdict, and once the verdict was given, we went into a 24-hour emergency mode, 12-hour shifts with one employee working each shift. We shut down all of our buildings. We evacuated all of our tenants in no time and make sure that everybody was, you know, that everybody left home. Afterwards, I went home, and as I got home, my wife and my kids, at the time, they were children, we all were watching, you know, the news. And like most Angelinos, we were in shock as the events developed. But then I got concerned as the air quality, the smog, and, you know, mixed with the air, became very, very hard on all of us. So I started shutting down any kind of entryway in my house to avoid the air from the outside to come into the house. And we also covered our mouths with, you know, racks, wet racks to, you know, try to breathe. I did that for my kids, my wife and I. But then, the next level was the concern of what if, you know, our properties would get, you know, looted and vandalized. And so I went from, you know, getting everybody safe to now, okay, how do I make my home, my family, safe? Omnipotence to me, many businesses around my neighborhood got looted and vandalized and torched. And I came to find out the next day, unfortunately. I went to see, drove around, and many of the business owners that I dealt with at the time were outside. I remember very vividly, the cleaners, you know, just two blocks from my house, was handing out insurance claim forms so that we could claim, you know, our property. And I just went and hugged him because he was in tears and said, "I'm not going to claim anything. What we need to do is heal each other and come into terms and help each other." So the devastation was pretty harsh around my neighborhood. A lot of businesses left. A lot of businesses remained open for a while, I mean, empty for a while. But then eventually, and thankfully, the neighborhood rebounded. And today, you know, that neighborhood is doing very well. Businesses are back in business. One of the businesses that got torched is a landmark. Many of you, I'm sure, have seen it. Mexican Village is a restaurant down in Beverly and Virgil. You know, came back, came back to business. So, you know, the images and the scars are there, but I think, you know, like most of us Angelinos, we rebounded, and we said, and we were determined to get our city back to where it was before and where it is now. Unfortunately, many of us made it a goal to make sure that this doesn't happen again. A few years back, we had a civil unrest on Sixth Street, and I was involved as part of this nonprofit that I oversee now. I was involved to make sure that there was not a civil unrest that escalated to the levels that, you know, we had at the time, back in the L.A. riots. So from my end, I'll make sure that we continue doing that and that we continue keeping our community safe and help everybody understand that, you know, violence is not the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. And while we have many community leaders here, we'll have one last speaker, Leon Gulet from the Community Build.
Hello, Mr. Council President. April 29th, 25 years ago, I was a community person. I was a person that was not headed in the right direction whatsoever. I was sitting inside the Pepe O'Dell Real Housing Projects when the verdict came out. Lots of people within the community was really upset because it wasn't the first time that that had happened, but it was the first time that we had seen it, it had been seen on TV. And a lot of folks had felt, were angry because, you know, they didn't get their right just due because when it happened to them, it was no proof that it had happened to anybody in the community until that film came out. And when that came out, our community just kind of went in chaos, myself, too. I kind of got out there, too. But then, at the time, I started seeing what was really happening. Folks were like running past each other that would normally be like at each other's stove. And a week later after that, some folks came up with the gang troops in Watts, where the gang troops in Watts led down to South L.A., and there was another gang troupe. We seen some light when the gang troops happened, and we started trying to organize our communities, and then started wanting to clean up our communities and went out painting and went out cleaning up some of the damage that was done within our communities. After that, Congresswoman Maxine Waters came out and started talking to some of the fellows in the communities about organizing. Then we learned about organizing in our communities. Community youth gang services stepped in and brought some of the guys in and employed some of us to go in our community and create the peace. From there, I was able to change my life, and from that point, be able to go into the community and continuously create peace for the last 25 years throughout the city of L.A. And I've been pretty effective at doing it. The work has been so good that I've made a pledge to myself that this is going to be my life's work. This is what I'm going to be doing for the rest of my life. I'm going to be helping folks within the community who are misdirected get back on the right path and be able to live a successful life like anybody else in our communities live a successful life. Being able to get our folks off the streets and into employment, being able to take our folks and be able to get them back into school, find some legitimate apprenticeship programs and put our folks into it. What was happening is we had no guidance at the time. And folks put us in a place where God put us in a place to be able to put the guidance out there for folks within our community and then take it from one place to another place. And folks started seeing that there was some hope there. And from that point on, from my community, it was a lot of the guys that were doing the wrongdoings stepped out and went out and got employment at Parsec Railroad and a couple of other places that was hiring folks at the time. And a big change happened within the streets. It made folks think differently, and it made folks want something, and it made folks not wanting to destroy their communities anymore. And like I said, from that, it was a great change for me. It changed my life. And by me changing my life, I was able to help other folks change their lives, and I live to change, help people change their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Community Build, Leon. Now, Mr. President, thank you so much for your time and to the City Council, and I'd like to turn it over to you if you have any final words.
Thank you, Mr. Rue and everyone for all that you've done. We've done a lot, but we still have a lot to do. So let's give everybody one more round of applause. I'm sure be seeing you over the weekend. We have so many joint events. So again, thank you, Mr. Rue. And just for those that are watching, Jody Yaxmer, Assistant General Manager from Personnel, did adopt our dog, Biscuit, so our 100% adoption rate is still alive. Madam Clerk, what business is before this council?
Council has motions for posting a referral-
You know what, Robert? Where's Robert? Was it Robert Cashvien? Somehow, Robert, we have to apologize to you. You got lost in the shuffle. But that's so when-
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, President Wesson. My name is Attorney Robert Cashvien. I'm asking the council to reconsider and reopen item number five. It's an approved hall route, and I filed an appeal. The basis for the hall route was, the basis for the appeal was that no notice was given to the 300-foot radius of the residence for the approved hall route, and no consideration was made, which the hall route trespasses on private property. I'm in District Five, and instead of filing a writ and wasting my client's resources and the city's resources, I'm asking these two points be considered: failure to give notice for the approved hall route and consideration of trespass on private property for the hall route. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so now that, in fact, we moved into all of the items that are posted and referred. Announcements, members announcements. Could we all rise for adjourning motions? All in the chambers, please rise for adjourning motions. I'm looking on my left side, Mr. Harris-Dawson's side. No adjourning motions. Looking to my right, no adjourning motions. This council meeting is adjourned.